This practice of holding virtual hearings to March 2023. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being live streamed. In order to ensure that the hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for consenting to connecting to this hearing is listed in today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments in opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again, and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes, and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address. I'm sorry. First, before they provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Fortune reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called, or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. These instructions will be repeated throughout the hearing. Today's board consists of six members, one less than a full board. As a result, if any applicant would like to wait until a seven-member board is seated, you can seek an administrative deferral. I will now take the roll call of attendance of board members. Mr. Fortune. Ms. Better Barazza.
President.
Ms. Dawn.
President.
Mr. Robinson.
Here.
Mr. Ujiro.
Good morning.
Morning, and Mr. Hampton for the BPDA.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Welcome, everybody. Mr. Fortune will now begin with the call of the list.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our first order of business is more of a housekeeping issue with the resignation of Madam Chair, Arroyo. We need to make a motion. I will make a motion to put my girl in as the chair for the remainder until such time as needed from the City of Boston to change that.
I'll second that motion. I'll second that.
Oh, is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Whoops, whoops. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I've got to do the roll call. Mr. Fortune.
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza.
Yes.
Ms. Dawn.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Ujiro.
Yes.
And I concur, so thank you all. And for the period of time in which I'll be chairing, I will try to do the best that I can in terms of fairness and transparency and equity for everybody who participates in these hearings. Mr. Fortune.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for stepping up to be the chair. The first order is extension. Call the first two cases, calling DOA 609-358-608-HAWK Street. There is a companion case, DOA 609-355-10-HAWK Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Mark Lacasse, Lacasse, 75 Arlington Street, and Boston Attorney for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Lacasse. Regarding 6 to 8 and 10 Hawk Street, the board originally granted its relief on November 4th of 2016. Soon after, someone appealed the decision to the Superior Court, and the act was dismissed on July 23rd of 2018. With tolling, that relief expired on October 28th, 2021. However, the applicant received two unnecessary extensions that extended this relief until July 23rd of 2022. The applicant has continued to pursue his permit, and ISD is requesting that they receive another extension from the board because of the administrative issue with the permit application. Although a relief has technically expired, this request is only for the applicant's first necessary extension when tolling is considered. Therefore, I recommend that the board grant this extension if it determines that it is appropriate under the circumstances with an effective date of October 4th, 2022, until October 4th, 2023.
Can I have a motion?
Motion to extend to October 4th, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Fortune.
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza.
Yes.
Ms. Dawn.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Ujiro.
Yes.
And I am in accord, the motion passes.
Thank you kindly.
Calling the next two cases for extension, calling DGC 30745-583 to 583D Ashmont Street. There is a companion case, DGC 30746-585 to 585D Ashmont Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Doug Stefanov, Architect, address of 423 West Broadway, South Boston.
Thank you, Mr. Stefanov. Regarding 583, 583D and 585, 585D Ashmont Street, the board originally granted this relief on May 17th of 2011. Soon after, someone appealed the decision to Superior Court, and the matter was dismissed in 2016. The board has since granted four extensions of relief. However, the last two extensions were unnecessary. With tolling, the second extension until October 16th, 2020 remains valid until January 21st of 2022. The most recent fourth but unnecessary extension extended the relief until October 16th of 2022. The applicant is now seeking further extension of relief until October 16th of 2023. I recommend that the board grant this extension if it finds it appropriate under the circumstances, keeping in mind that this is only the applicant's third necessary extension rather than a fifth.
Can I have a motion, please?
Motion for a one-year extension to October 16th, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Fortune.
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza.
Yes.
Ms. Dawn.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Ms. Mr. Ujiro.
Yes.
I do agree, the motion passes.
Calling the last case for extension.
Thank you.
Sorry. Calling the last case for extension, calling DOA 103-56213-Robinson Street. Name and address for the record, please.
12 Gomes, 3 Robinson Street, Norchester, Mass. 2122.
Thank you, Mr. Gomes. Regarding 3 Robinson Street, the board granted this relief on October 9th of 2020. This is the applicant's first request for an extension. No tolling applies to this matter. I recommend that the board grant this relief if it finds it appropriate under the circumstances.
To what date, Mr. Fortune?
Well, it expired on October 9th of 2020. 22, I'm sorry, 22, October 9th of 2022. Well, it will expire on October 9th.
Motion for a one-year extension to October 9th, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Fortune.
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza.
Yes.
Ms. Dawn.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Ujiro.
Yes.
And I agree, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Chair, would you like to make your comments on the deferrals and extensions? We have a six-member board.
Well, I already said that initially, but I'll remind people before you ask for deferrals and withdrawals. This is a six-member board, so everyone is entitled to an administrative deferral, should you wish.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to call any deferrals or withdrawals for the 930 cases only.
Yes, Mr. Secretary.
If you can just give me the address, please.
229 Maverick Street.
Thank you. For the record, calling DOA 137-6537-229-Maverick Street. Name and address for the record.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Attorney Derek Small, with business address of 31 Dobson Road. We're here seeking a deferral of this matter this morning.
Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Fortune.
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza.
Yes.
Ms. Dawn.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Ujiro.
Yes.
And I agree. For the late date.
Counselor, I was going to ask you, do you need a later date here? We can go into December, but I don't know what the circumstances are. You need to go in front of the community?
There's no rush for it. If you have a date November, that's fine.
All right. We can do November, well, we can do November 15th.
That's fine.
November 30. Mr. Chair, so it's November 15th at 11:30.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals? Can you give me the address first, please?
17 Sheaf Street.
Calling DOA 133-9787-17-SHEAF STREET. Name and address for the record, please.
Laurence Scatino, 245 Sumner Street in East Boston. Just requesting an administrative deferral, please.
Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to defer.
Second.
Mr. Fortune.
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza.
Yes.
Ms. Dawn.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Ujiro.
Yes.
And I am also in support, motion passes.
You have a date of, you have the last date in November, November 15th at 11:30. We're now into December.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for the 930 case?
Yes. I'm requesting a deferral for 684 to 702 Center Street, Ward 19.
For the record, calling DOA 134-2865-684 to 702 Center Street. Name and address for the record. Your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, I'm sorry, Eric Lawrence, 684 Center Street, Jamaica Plain, Mass.
Are you requesting administrative deferral?
Yes, I am. Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
I'll second, Eric.
Mr. Fortune.
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza.
Yes.
Ms. Dawn.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Ujiro.
Yes.
And I am in agreement, motion passes.
And we are into December 6th at 11:30.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for the 930? There are none, I'll call the first case. Calling DOA 138-1921-45-SOLI STREET. This is the renovation of 45 Soli Street. The proposed work is for roof deck to be built. Violation Article 62, Section 25. That roof structure restricts access to the main roof by a spiral stair. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago in Tuscana with the business address of 11 Beacon Street. Mr. Secretary, I just wanted to make sure that you knew there was a companion case as well. There's 245.
Yes, I'm sorry, you're right, sorry. There is a companion case, Mr. Drago, thank you. Case DOA 138-1925-45-SOLI STREET. We just called it in for the record and a brain grab. This is proposed curb cut for residential parking in a residential one-family home. The curb cut will be at Monument Court beside of the home for one top power parking space, eight by five by 20. The violation is Article 10, Section 1, limitation of area accessory uses. Article 62, Section 8, insufficient usable open space. And Article 62, Section 29, the utility pole is in the way of the access drive. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago in Tuscana with the business address of 11 Beacon Street, here on behalf of the applicant, Jane Reitz, and the owner of the property at 45 Soli Street. We're proposing to, in one application, to erect a roof deck 140 square feet on top of the building. And on a second application for use of premise, to create a curb cut for one parking space, just to point out to the board, this curb cut would be accessed on Monument Court. And that's a picture of it right there. There is no parking on that side of the street, so we're not losing any existing street parking for this one spot. As was mentioned, this has become a one-family building. It was previously a two. This is a 3F 2000 district. And just to go over, the roof deck, as was mentioned, is 140 square feet. It's accessed by a spiral staircase. And the parking space is eight and a half by 20. And the rear, it's got a 10-foot wide curb cut, and it actually has additional space in front and back, so it would be one of the larger spaces along that area. Most of the buildings around us have curb cuts on that side of the street, and many of our budding buildings have roof decks as well. I can just go over the violations that were read. One is roof structure restriction, and it's due to the roof deck. And you can see in this picture, it's accessed through the back, second floor, through a spiral staircase and a second deck. Limitation of area accessory use, that is for the parking. It is just five feet off of the property line, within five feet of the side buffer line. And then off-street design and maneuverability. It mentions the utility pole. It is actually a city streetlight, one of the gas lamps. We met with the streetlight division. If we were to be approved by the board, they said they would work with us at our expense to move, to shift the pole slightly, a few feet, to the right or to the left, at their discretion. And then open space, 350 square feet is required, and we are proposing 316 square feet. And that is with the addition of our decks. The area that we're proposing for the parking space is existing hot tub now, so we're not taking any green space away. I can pause and answer any questions of the board.
Okay, a couple of questions, Mr. Drago. So this is in the neighborhood overlay district, is that correct?
No, not to my knowledge.
Uh huh, okay. Yeah, I'm looking at the drawing. So is the deck below the one that the, looks like either a door or a slider or whatever opens onto, is that existing?
No, it is not. So that is a proposed deck. It wasn't cited for any violation. It isn't as of right, but it would.
Okay, so you're actually building two decks. One below spiral staircase going up to the roof and a roof deck.
Correct.
Okay. But there's no violation on the lower one. All right.
Mr. Chair, you are correct. It is in the neighborhood design overlay district.
Okay, that's what I meant.
Not cited, I apologize, Mr. Erlich.
It's okay, Mr. Drago.
Mr. Erlich, it's Jeff Hampton. Just for the record, being in an NDOD is not a zoning violation.
Yeah, well, I understand that. I was just trying to clarify. Okay, so and then the second, so there's two separate things. So and the second thing is from the rear, from the court, is this parking. And we're talking about a 10-foot curb cut and a 10-foot wide parking area, is that right?
Yes, it's a full parking space, which you can see here, Mr. Chair. And it's additional room in the front of the eight and a half by 20, and there's additional space in the rear, just for a little extra.
Okay. Ms. Better Barazza, how are the drawings?
Mr. Chair, the drawings are adequate.
Okay, Mr. Fortune, did the BPDA have an opinion on this?
We recommended approval with design review on the roof deck because it's in an NDOD. We'd like to defer to BTD for the curb cut and the parking space out back.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Mr. D'Amico, I believe, is on. He does have a comment on this.
Mr. D'Amico, please enlighten us. Mr. D'Amico, are you there?
Yeah, his hand's raised.
Okay, has he been unmuted?
Hello?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Bob D'Amico, BTD. It's in the rear, so I have no problem with this design. Motion to approve from BTD.
Okay, very good, thank you. All right, is there anyone here who would like to testify either in favor or opposition?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with Mayor's Office of Government Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer judgment to the board. Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of information due to personnel changes in our office, but at this time, our office is unaware of any concerns expressed from the board. Thanks.
Are you, Mr. Newman, are you aware of the streetlight issue?
Yes, we can see that in the description there. As I said before, we're not aware of any concerns. We've reached out to our office recently with letters.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, secretary here, we do have letters of opposition. We have one page of support, signature.
What are the letters of opposition based on, Mr. Fortune?
Parking.
Okay, all right. But the BTD is comfortable with the arrangement. All right, are there any other raised hands? Anybody else want to testify? Okay, can I have a motion, please? Motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I do have a raised hand.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
All right, Mary Ann. Hi, Mary Ann, can you hear me? Mary Ann? I don't, she's.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Mary Ann Chase Borden, 12 Monument Court.
Are you in favor of opposition?
I am in opposition. I just heard a comment that someone said it's in the rear, so it's no problem. Please let me point out to you that "in the rear" means Monument Court. This is a small dead-end street. There are three houses on this street, and it is a huge problem for us. We have a problem as it is here. We have seven cars in those three houses, and we can never get a spot on the street. Those of us who live here, we have older women who are lugging bundles from, you know, remote locations. And the reason we can't is primarily due to Soli Street because Soli Street has been converted. A lot of the houses from 39 to 51 have been converted to tenancies. They now have absentee owners. And the absentee owners don't seem to care about the conditions here, which are terrible from these locations. This one particular one is absurd. A 10-foot minimum space, I saw the drawing. There is absolutely no radius there for turning around. And I heard that there's no problem because there's no parking on that side of the street. Well, it's a very small street. So there is a problem because given that we only have 10 spaces on the entire street with seven cars, coming from other places to park here.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you.
You're cutting me off, I'm done.
Well, you're now repeating yourself. So if you have something new to say, please, please go ahead. Otherwise, I will ask you to stop. All right, can I have a motion, please?
Motion. Motion to approve a BPDA designer review for the roof deck.
Can I add? Can I add another proviso to that?
Go ahead.
To provide access internally through a roof hatch versus an exterior spiral.
Oh, that's a, that would be a pretty fundamental redesign, wouldn't it?
No, I mean, you have, you can do an internal stair going off from the staircase on the plan. I mean, this would allow for controlling of noise and sound from the exterior, and it could be direct access internally.
Okay, so and can we also add a third proviso that the BTD review the, once again, review the parking spot? All right, Mr. Ujiro, you made the motion. Will you accept those amendments?
I suppose, yeah.
Okay, is there a second? Can I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Fortune.
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza.
Yes.
Ms. Dawn.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Ujiro.
Yes.
I am two in favor, so, Mr. Hampton, can you please, you know, look to see whether what Better Barazza is proposing is feasible when you do your design review?
Will do.
Okay, thank you.
Calling next case, calling DOA 126-6818-12-128 Hudson Street. This is erecting a new six-story building with one restaurant, shelves, spaces, and four residential units. The violation is Article 32, that's 32, that's law. This is in the Gcod. And Article 43, Section 23, OSTRY 5. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is George Maranti. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Mr. Chair, members, this is an application for a new six-story building, which would contain a two-story restaurant and four dwelling units above at 12-12K Hudson Street in Chinatown. This is located within the historic Chinatown protection area as a zoning sub-district under Article 43. The plans that are before the board today have been updated since the permit application was initially filed and the original zoning refusal letter was issued. The original proposal called for two restaurants in four residential units above, including restaurant space in the basement. That has been changed so that the proposed use now is a bi-level restaurant on the ground floor and the second floor. That restaurant would be a total of approximately 2,200 square feet. The basement would be entirely unoccupied space. It would serve the restaurant. It would contain a common mechanical and sprinkler room, common stairway, and there is above five feet of head height in a portion of the basement that would allow for storage and trash storage for the restaurant. The units above are all very simple. They're four one-bedroom floor-through units of approximately 686 square feet. The zoning refusal letter cited Gcod applicability. It cited a violation for excessive floor area ratio. That violation was eliminated with the revised plan and a violation for insufficient off-street parking. The only zoning relief being sought is for insufficient off-street parking as we are, of course, complying with groundwater conservation overlay district requirements. With that, I'll take any questions that members may have, and I believe after that, the board could hear from Mr. Simonelli on the Gcod matter.
Okay, well, let's deal with, let's deal with the Gcod upfront. Mr. Simonelli, are you with us?
Yes, and, Mr. Chairman, good morning. Members of the board, Kristen Simonelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we have both letters from the applicant.
Mr. Chair, we have the letters as well.
Okay, thank you. All right, now let's go to the merits of the case. So, Mr. Maranti, there's now one restaurant. The basement is simply being used as a storage and mechanical rooms for, all the utilities for the entire building will be located in the basement?
That's correct. It would comply with coastal flood resiliency requirement as this area has a base flood elevation of 19 feet. So it was important to eliminate any occupiable space in the basement. The groundwater recharge system, of course, would be located there.
Okay, that was, well, you anticipated my next question, so. All right, well, then it seems, are these units rental or condo?
These are supposed as rental units, Mr. Chairman. And for the record, because it may come up in public testimony, my questions were posed to my clients that they would agree that these units would not be used for short-term Airbnb-style rentals. My clients agreed to that. And it was also requested that my clients agree this will not be the future site of a billboard, including an electronic billboard. And my clients went on the record with the Chinatown Resident Association and agreed to that as well.
Okay, all right. And with six units, I mean, I'm sorry, four units, I assume they are all market rate?
Yes, these are four market rate units. And again, the sole zoning violation is off-street parking. There's simply no opportunity to provide parking here.
Okay, all right. Ms. Bede Barazza, how are the drawings?
Mr. Chair, the drawings are adequate. I just wanted confirmation that what I'm seeing as Xedout is an elevator. It's an accessible elevator.
That is correct. That is an elevator. Ms. Bede Barazza providing accessibility to the building.
Right, no further questions.
Okay, any questions on the board? Mr. Hampton, the BPDA raised issues about rear egress and rear stairwell?
Yes, if we could do design review on that, if necessary, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Bede Barazza, did you notice that as well?
I did, but I didn't see any issues with the rear. But I would just add a proviso if there's a motion taken.
Only if you feel, Ms. Bede Barazza.
Okay, thanks.
All right.
All right, is there anyone here who would like to testify on behalf or in opposition to this project?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the board. My name is Chulhan Hua, with Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. An abutter's meeting was held by our office on September 5th, July 5th. And the applicant has submitted very large support. We are unaware of any concerns from the, we're not aware at this time. And we would like to defer judgment to the board.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair Secretary here, we do have support letter.
Do we have any raised hands?
No raised hands.
Okay, Mr. Maranti, before we go to a motion, just out of curiosity, what are the hours, proposed hours of the restaurant?
Honestly, Mr. Chairman, I don't know. Only because I'm doing the zoning, I will not be doing the licensing work for it. So that would be a proper subject for the licensing board. So I'm sorry, I just don't know.
Okay, all right, well, from a zoning perspective, that's not an issue, so. All right, can I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve with a proviso of BPDA design review.
Entertained.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Ruggiero?
Yes.
And I'm in favor as well, motion passes.
Thank you.
Calling the next three cases, calling BOA 132-0876-58 Clifford Street. There's two companion cases, BOA 132-0877-60 Clifford Street and BOA 132-0884-35 Waverly Street. This is for 58 Clifford Street. Subdivide existing 7,840 square foot lot. Construct a three-story semi-attached single-family dwelling on 3,640 square feet. Be known as Lot B. There will be a five-foot wide strip of land being conveyed to 56 Clifford Street, Lot C. This will be an affordable, single-family home in partnership. Violation of Article 50, Section 29. This is for 60 Clifford Street. This is subdividing 7,840 square feet and construct a three-story semi-attached, single-family dwelling on 3,640 square feet, known as Lot A. The violation of Article 50, Section 29, front yard is insufficient. And this is for 35 Waverly Street. This is constructing a new, affordable, single-family home being constructed on a vacant lot in partnership with the City of Boston, DND. The violation of Article 10, Section 1, the limitation of the area of accessory use. Article 50, Section 29, the lot lift is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, lot frontage is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the front yard is insufficient. And Article 50, Section 29, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Hello, I'm Josh Smith, this is Upper Architects. My address is 315 A Street in Seaport. I'll be the presenter for these projects.
Go ahead, tell us what you're proposing, please.
Okay. So these projects are part of the Department of Neighborhood Development's Waverly Homes Initiative. So there's taking over four empty lots that are owned by the city and putting new, basically, single-family houses on them. For the 58 and 60 Clifford, they're single-family row houses with two beds, one and a half baths, or about 400 square feet each. The zoning works, except for the front yard setback, were trying to match the neighbors' exact modal alignment. Whereas per zoning code, the modal alignment is set off by larger buildings that are further away from the street, down about a block away. So we're just trying to match the 14-foot setback of the neighbors rather than the 20-foot setback per code.
Got it, okay. And what are the other violations that are involved here? Can you just walk us through them?
Yeah, so 58 and 60, these two, the only violation is the front yard setback.
Okay, so that's the bottom, yeah.
The downstreet 35 Waverly, where the lot itself is too narrow per zoning code to have anything built on it. Like, the optimum for a single-family home is 45 feet, and the lot itself is only 37.5 feet. So for that one, we're asking for a front yard setback violation to be mobile with the exact neighbors. And we're also asking for a lot with lot frontage variance.
Got it, okay. And these are all single, the lots are all currently vacant?
Yes.
Okay, and these are going to be for sale?
Yes, these are reduced-cost units that market through the Department of Neighborhood Development. And there's, I'm not certain of the exact reduced amounts.
It's 80 to 100% AMI. Prices haven't been determined yet.
Okay, thank you. All right, Ms. Bede Barazza, how are the drawings?
The drawings are adequate, Mr. Chair.
Any questions on the board? Is there anyone here to testify on behalf of the projects?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Keisha Santana from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant met with abutters and received support. My co-syndicate forwarded a letter of support from the abutting neighborhoods in Project Wright and also received support from Roxbury Path Forward as well. At this time, we would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair Secretary here, we do have a letter from Project Wright.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Paul Solomon from City Council Lodge, Michael Flaherty, Council to go record and support.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Jack Studley from Council Murphy's Office. Council also like to go on record and support.
Mr. Chair, I have two raised hands.
Okay, no, let's go ahead.
All right, Tiara, if you could state your name and address for the record, please?
Good morning, my name is Tiara Satchel, and I'm a Housing Development Officer with the Mayor's Office of Housing. This project involves MOH land and funding. PWN has worked closely with Roxbury Path Forward, who is in support of this project, and MOH is fully in support of this project.
Thank you.
One more raised hand. Oh, okay, I guess not. We're all set.
Okay, there's some of these individuals, thank you. All right, can I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion of approval.
Do you want to include the design review?
No, Mr. Chair.
No, it's already reviewing it.
Yeah, DND has their review process. We don't need to be repetitive. I'll second Eric.
Okay, motions are made and seconded. On Mr. Fortune? Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Ruggiero?
Yes.
All right, and I too am in favor, the motion passes.
On your next case, calling BOA 113-3522, 8 Adrian Street. This is a new two-and-a-half, two-family dwelling on a non-conformant. The violation of Article 50, Section 43, Ostrich Park is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the lot area is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the floor area ratio is excessive. Article 50, Section 29, usable open space is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, front yard is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the side yard is insufficient. And Article 50, Section 29, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, good morning. My name is Andrew Falkenstein. I'm an architect practicing at Step and Kent Street in Brookline. We are here today to ask for relief for a new construction, two-family home at 8 Adrian Street. This is a small, two-unit building proposed on a small lot. The house is designed in sympathy with many of the adjacent two- and three-family houses. It has a front porch, it has a rear porch, and it has a front bay. The lot is a small lot, but the house is a small house. The total square footage, including basement, is 2,523 square feet. And that 2,523 square feet is split roughly evenly between a lower duplex and a top duplex. So the resulting FAR on the lot would be 1.16. The existing condition is this has been a vacant lot for as long as anyone can remember. And Adrian Street itself is really a paper road. It's unpaved, and it is unconnected on two sides. And this would have full frontage on Adrian Street and would help really end a condition where this lot has been used to dump trash and for homeless people to hang out and for illicit activities to occur. It borders other two- and three-family houses, neighboring streets. And by becoming a used dwelling unit rather than a vacant lot, it's going to make the entire neighborhood safer. And I do not know of any undesirable effects in the neighborhood that this will bring. We are not proposing to have any on-street parking, but we believe that there is enough on-street parking in the neighborhood and also on Adrian Street itself to accommodate these two new residential units.
Okay, so the orientation of the building is not exactly facing Adrian Street, right?
That's correct. It actually picks up, for both lot reasons but also for massing reasons, we are facing the same weighted building space on Ramlet Place. So it's, the front door faces east, and there would be a walkway from Adrian Place or from Ramlet Place to get to the front door and building. In a lot of ways...
Okay, okay, let me ask you a few questions. There's no parking provided, I mean, the lot is incredibly small, so I can't say what... Is there parking on both sides of Adrian Street?
Yes, to the best of my knowledge, there's parking on both sides of Adrian Street.
Okay, now, the other question, this is two units on a very small lot. You've got a part of Unit 1 extends into the basement with a bedroom down below, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, now, what is the height of the basement floor to the grade? How far below ground about?
If you give me one second, I can answer that question.
I mean, it looks to be, by virtue of the elevations, to be almost completely below grade.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's mostly, yeah, it's pretty much mostly below grade.
And what is the height from floor to ceiling in the basement?
Believe it's an eight-foot ceiling.
Eight-foot ceiling, okay. This board does not, is not particularly thrilled about living units in the basement and particular bedrooms that are below grade. So just to let you know upfront. Okay, Ms. Bede Barazza, how are the drawings?
Mr. Chair, the drawings are adequate. I just had a question regarding whether BTD reviewed this project in regards to the public way, in regards to the street.
Mr. D'Amico, can you answer that?
Yes, Bob D'Amico, BTD. We have not reviewed this because we didn't see a parking violation, to the best of my knowledge, on this. But no, we have not reviewed this.
Okay, because one of the questions I had was really access. Currently, in Google Earth, it shows, we can't really access currently the house. So if we were to pass this, there would have to be street improvement to access, you know, to continue accessibility along Adrian Street.
It's unpaved currently, correct?
Correct, currently it's unpaved.
But you can't, can you actually walk from one side of the street to the other?
Well, you couldn't, well...
Because the Google images shows a block.
Someone, whether legally, I believe it's illegally because there's abutters rights. Someone's put a fence.
That's right.
But that would have to be removed. And I believe that since we have full abutters rights, we would have the right to take that down. But as it comes in now, it is a dead-end street on both sides. But there is a paper road that goes all the way through.
Right, but you would need significant street improvement from the city to make this work.
Well, we're not requesting that. We're not requesting the city to do anything. If the Boston Fire Department becomes satisfied that they can get a fire truck in front of the house, we're not asking the city for any improvements to the street.
So explain to me where this fence is.
So as you come in from Blue Hills and you proceed past the lot, there is a fence, I can show you a photograph if you'd like. I can show you a photograph.
Well, if it's part of what was provided, you can't share the screen with your own staff.
But essentially...
Is it perpendicular across the street?
Yes, it's perpendicular blocking off the end of the street, correct.
So it blocks access, and that was Ms. Bede Barazza's point?
Correct, yeah.
And you say that you would have the right to remove that unilaterally?
That's, we've done some research, and any abutter has a right to this paper road and can pass, and no one owner has the right to block it off. The road being a private road, all abutters have rights, and this person who's blocking access has done so probably for safety reasons, keeping people off their property, but they're not legally entitled to do that.
Interesting. Mr. Hampton, I know that the BPDA is weighing in on this project.
We did, we recommended denial without prejudice. We, this is actually similar to what happened last week over in Dorchester, where it was a 2,000-square-foot lot. And we think a two-family is too much in this. And it's, you know, kind of ironic, we recommended approval of the one-family last week on a 2,000-square-foot lot. But we think that a two-family on 2,100 square feet is just too much. So we recommend it denial without prejudice.
This is on a three-family, 4,000 zoning. I just want to let everyone know that.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so you've got a 2,000-square-foot lot with a two-unit, including basement, bedroom, and it's a 3F, 4,000 area, okay. All right, well, Mr. Hampton, this comments makes sense. Let me just move to testimony. Is there anyone here to speak either in favor or in opposition to this project?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Keisha Santana from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant met with abutters, and there was no attendance. He also reached out to my co-syndicate and Dudley Street Neighborhood Initiative. Mike is going with Dudley Street, and then Dudley Street neither supported or was in opposition of the project. So there's not really any direct opinion or input from community. But yeah, at this point, we would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Okay, are you aware of this issue of the fence going across the street?
No, I wasn't aware that there was a fence.
All right, is there any other testimony?
Mr. Chair, I have one raised hand.
Okay.
See, Bob? State your name and address for the record, please.
Who is that, Mr. D'Amico?
Yes, yes, hi, Bob D'Amico, BTD. I would like to request some sort of detailed plan because you'd need 20 feet to gain access to egress to any parking area. But since, from what I've seen, there is no parking proposed, so anyone gaining access to the site would have to walk or use a bike. And as long as it meets Fire Department approval, I have no opposition to this.
I would like to add one extra fact. The existing condition, which we said is fenced off, it's actually gated off. It's actually a gate, and so it is an openable opening at this point.
Okay, but it would have to be removed regardless?
It seems like they just closed the streets. Like, I'm looking at it in Google, they blocked the streets. I think this is a city issue.
Okay, I mean, it sounds like, this sounds like there are a really number of unresolved issues here.
We did reach out to the... We did reach out to the-
Oh, okay, I think we've heard what we need to know. All right, I think there are a number of unresolved issues here. And the BPDA recommends denial without prejudice. I mean, perhaps we'll give the applicant the opportunity to sort out some of these issues and come back with a more complete plan at a later date. But I'm interested in the motion at the moment.
Motion for denial.
Mr. Jarrow, you want to deny without prejudice? I'm sorry.
Sorry, did I bring up, yeah.
A second. I don't hear a second. If there's no second, I would need another motion.
I'd like to make a motion of approval with provizals. The first one being BTD review in regards to Adrian Street access. The other is BPDA design review to look at the elevation along Adrian Street so it responds to that frontage. Those are the two provizals. Oh, I'm sorry, the third one, the third one is to not have a habitable bedroom in the basement.
I'll second that, Eric.
Okay, Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrow?
No.
And I, too, am opposed. I think it's too dense, so the motion does not pass. So the, in fact, the motion is denied. No, next case.
Hold on, Mr. Chair. Okay, sorry, I missed. Calling a next case, calling DOA 1291107, 73 to 75 Basin Street. This is a change of argument from a two-family drawing to a three-family drawing. The violation is Article 50, Section 29. The additional lot area is sufficient. Article 50, Section 29, used to open spaces insufficient. An Article 50, Section 43, lawsuit filed and loaded. Name and address for the record, please. Is there a Mr. McCall on? Or anybody from Basin Street? People raise hands.
Gary?
Yeah, good morning, board members. My name is Gary McCall. Thank you for your time this morning.
Name and address for the record, please.
Oh, Gary McCall, 75 Basin Street, Dorchester, Mass. 02121.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. McCall, tell us what you're proposing.
My proposal here is just, it's actually a two-and-a-half family, so I'm taking the half-family that's up top and making it to a standalone unit, so making it a sense of three-family. I do have a driveway, but it appears that it didn't, it wasn't wide enough, but it's always been there. The curb is already cut. It can fit two cars in the driveway already. My proposal is to extend the driveway and add additional parking in the back so that wouldn't be an issue with the Butters or anything like that. I know parking is an issue in Boston, and I'll do my part to ensure that we have the additional parking in the back.
Okay, so you want to take an existing two-family dwelling and make it a three-family by making the top floor a separate unit, is that correct?
Yes, yes, and I actually found out from doing the Butters' meeting that their dad owned it in the 1930s, and she thought it was already a three-family, but it was never made legal. So there's really no-
I'll be right out there, okay?
There's no cause-
Okay, so let's go through a few things. One is, we'll get to the driveway in a minute. How big is the third floor, the separate unit? How many square feet? Mr. McCall, are you there? Mr. McCall? Madam Ambassador, have we lost the applicant?
Get him, he's back on now. Let me see, I don't know what happened. Gary?
I'm here, I'm not sure what happened. I got disconnected.
Yeah, it's great.
All right, so my question was, how big is the new proposed third-floor unit? How big are all the units?
I believe it's in the notes there. I'm not exactly 100% sure. But I know they're about, I would say, 2,000 square feet each. And then, when you look up at the top, it's about half that.
Okay, so somewhere around 1,000?
Ninety inches, 90 inches to the roof.
And what has the third floor been used for up until now?
I lived up there all my life. I lived in that house since I was 14 years old. I bought it from my mom back in 17, and that's basically- It was all connected.
Okay, so what, second and third floor? We've got a lot of background, no, whoever's the source of that, if they can mute themselves, please.
Yes, sir.
So the second and third floor were one unit up until now?
Yes.
Okay, and what, you're putting in a new kitchen and bathroom on the third floor, is that the plan?
Yes, yes, it actually already had a bathroom. All that stuff was already up there, it was just never made legal.
There was a kitchen before as well?
It's just a kitchen there, there's no kitchen there. I would have to install an electric stove.
Okay, and you're saying this is somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,000 square feet? What's the floor-to-ceiling height in that?
90, 90 inches.
90 inches, okay.
And you do see in the plans for the fire protection as well.
All right, and where, but the house has been assessed as a two-family up until now?
Yes.
Okay, and what will you do about, is there, are there separate meters for the two existing units?
Yes.
And where are they, in the basement?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and now, so there'll be a third meter added to attract the utilities for the separate space?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, is there anything in the basement besides just utilities and storage?
Not just utility and storage, that's it. Nothing else is down there.
Okay.
No plans to do anything else with it.
Okay, and you're not doing anything to the exterior? Not changing the exterior at all?
No, no, sir.
Okay, all right, how are the drawings, Ms. Bede Barazza?
Mr. Chair, the plans are adequate. The only question I have was really for the driveway.
Yes, so let's get to the driveway. You said that 7'7" is where those bumpouts are? That's what the, how do you get a car through there?
If I could share my screen, I can show you there's two cars that's always in the driveway. I'm not sure if you can get a car back there. You can actually get a small pickup truck back there, so.
Mr. Chair, Mr. D'Amico has spoken. He's got his hand raised, I think he probably didn't like that.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, Bob D'Amico, BTD. 7.7 feet is much too narrow, especially in inclement weather. And in the name of public safety, I request denial for this proposal.
Okay, I mean, 7'7" is extremely narrow. What's on the other side of the neighboring lot? Is you, when you drive past those bumpouts, do you end up going over the neighbor's property?
No, that's my problem. I actually have a picture in the inclement weather with two cars in the driveway. I could share with you, if you allow me to share my screen.
We don't share screens.
Okay, sorry.
We just know what's submitted.
Okay.
Mr. D'Amico, I don't, how does he even get those cars past there?
He can't, 7'7" is not adequate. We have a minimum of at least nine feet. Sometimes we're flexible to go to eight feet, but not 7.7. I just worry about approval for that. I've never approved something under 8.5 feet, so I can't go along with this.
Okay, Mr. D'Amico, may I ask a question?
Sure.
So when the house was built, the driveway is already there, so from the beginning it was inadequate? Or did it change over time?
Well, I can't comment on what was there before. All I know is being presented at this point in time.
It's a current driveway. All I was going to do was extend it back.
No, we understand. I think we're just a little puzzled how you can get a car past there. What is the curb cut, by the way? What's the dimension on the curb cut? The existing curb cut?
I don't have that dimension, sir. I wish I had put the picture in there. You would have saw that, oh, wow, he can't get a car through there.
From the picture, it looks like it's 10 feet.
Okay.
And it doesn't look like they actually go beyond the bumpout in the current configuration because there's a retaining wall to the left-hand side. So I see where there's paving up to the bumpout, where he might park, but I don't think he can get by either.
Okay, all right, well, that would explain it. Okay, all right, enough on that. Is there anyone here who wants to speak in favor or in opposition?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Keisha Santana from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant met with the Butters on August 2nd, where they received support from a budding neighbors and also met with MyKoZu, where he submitted a letter of support on behalf of the Basin Street Residents Association and Project Right. At this time, we would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, secretary, here, we do have a couple letters of support.
Okay, anyone?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council, Lance Michael Flay, and Lieutenant American in support.
Thank you.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Jack Dudley, Councilmember, Office of Counsel, like to owe American support.
Thank you, anyone else?
I have one right, oh, no, it's still Gary. We're all set.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to put a motion forward to approve without the three proposed parking spaces due to the driveway with limitation.
I'll second that, Eric.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrow?
Yes.
And I am also in favor. So, Mr. McCall, you're, the shifting it from a two to a three-family has been approved, but not the extended driveway in the back.
Okay, sir, thank you guys so much. Appreciate your time.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, it's now 10:33. Would you like to make your statement there?
Yes, today we are a six-member board. For those of you who are on, you can see that. If you would wish to wait until there's a full seven-member board, you can request an administrative deferral and have it be granted. It takes five votes for a motion to pass.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to call the 10:30 cases, just the 10:30 only. For any deferrals or withdrawals, give me the address first. You're going to defer or withdraw. Yes, go ahead.
Hi, I have a 9:30 case, and I didn't hear my case called.
I'm calling 10:30s right now. This is the process we go through then. Is there anybody who has a 10:30 case that they are deferring or withdrawing?
Good morning, yes, this is Leslie Delaney Hawkins.
Address, please, address, address?
329 to 329A Columbus Avenue.
Okay, thank you, hold on two seconds. For the record, calling DOA 138363661, 329 to 329A Columbus Ave. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Leslie Delaney Hawkins with the law firm of Princeville, Belkai, having an address of 1-inch international place. We would like to respectfully request an administrative deferral regarding the application for 329 to 329A Columbus Avenue.
Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrow?
Yes.
And I, too, am in favor. Do you have a date?
We'll have a date of December 6th at 11:30.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for the 10:30 cases only? Hearing none, I'll go back to the 9:30 cases. Calling DOA 131546431 Torrey Street. This is a curb cut driveway for three vehicles. The violation is Article 10, Section 1, a limitation of parking area, and Article 65, Section 9, Residential Dimensional Regulation, insufficient usable open space per unit. Name and address for the record.
Monette Vickers, 31 Torrey Street.
Ms. Vickers, can you tell us what you're proposing?
Proposing to do a curb cut. I have worked with the city. There was a utility pole in place. They approved that. I had it made and moved. And then, when I got to the last part, I got a denial. So I'm asking you guys for relief. And I can do a two-part. It's similar to my neighbors in the area of the three families in Dorchester. And I already moved the pole and worked with street lighting to remove the pole, the light pole that was in front of the proposed driveway.
So the pole has already been moved?
It has been.
Okay, all right, can we scroll? Yeah, whoa, whoa, whoa. So, let's see, what's the width of the driveway at its narrowest point?
Hello?
Ms. Vickers?
Hi.
Hi, what's the width of the driveway at the narrowest point, where the bumpout in the house is?
I believe it's about 14. I'm not too sure. I have my contractor on the line because I'm not too good with the measurements. But it's similar to the same of all the other three families on the street. I have one adjacent from me, across from me, and they're both the same.
Okay, can we scroll down and look at the next block plan? Or up? There we go. Ms. Bede Barazza, can you tell what the dimensions are?
It wasn't noted on the survey block plan, so I couldn't tell you that. From the Google image, it looks very narrow.
All right, Ms. Vickers, is your contractor on there? Because we need to know what the dimensions are in order to make a useful decision.
Okay, let me see right now.
I see the curb cut is 10 feet, so that's-
Yeah, that's met the requirement.
I think it's, if you look at the car dimensions and the 10-feet curb cut, it has to be anywhere between 7 and 1/2 to 9.
Yeah, no, you're right. If you sort of just take that and transpose it up to that bumpout, that doesn't, it certainly looks, all right.
Mr. Chair, I guess, Mr. D'Amico, I don't see his hand raised, but he did speak on this.
And what was his opinion?
I don't know if he's going to raise his hand or not.
There he is, Mr. D'Amico.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, Bob D'Amico, BTD. First of all, car number one would have to be removed. And secondly, I would like to ask, a lot of background was- Secondly, I would, secondly, I would like to, oh, damn it. Secondly, I'd like to request a plan for BTD review as a proviso.
Mark, you muted.
I don't think we can really take much action without a plan with dimensions showing the width of the driveway in particular at the bumpout.
Can I make a motion to defer? I'll flick it back, Eric.
Yeah, okay, Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrow?
Yes.
And I, too, that motion passes. So, Ms. Vickers, we will need a better plan that shows the dimensions, in particular, what the width of the driveway is at that bump out in the, on the side of the house. We can't make a decision in the absence of that. So, do you have a date, Mr. Fortune?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we do, December sixth at eleven thirty.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Calling the next case, calling DOA one three three six eight two zero forty-nine Corbett Street. This is to confirm offices of one family, build a two-and-a-half-story addition at the side of the house with full basement, and enclose the portion of the front porch. It says, remove the existing roof and replace with new gable roof and a five-foot higher peak. Violation is Article sixty, section nine, front yard insufficient. Article sixty, section nine, side yard insufficient. And Article sixty, section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Sean Bowden, forty-nine Corbett Street.
All right, can you tell us what you're proposing, please?
Uh, we are proposing to build an addition on the side of our home, as well as enclosing the back portion of the front porch to create a mudroom.
And how big is this addition?
So, the addition itself is about one thousand square feet.
Okay. Is there a plot plan so that we can see how that addition fits into the overall plot?
Yeah, I have a plot plan, yes.
I did one, that was something that I noted. It was not given to me, the plot plan.
It's not in the...
Surveying plot plan, no, it's not in the package.
Oh.
We did submit that. I, I have one. President, I know you don't share screens.
Well, no, unfortunately, you can't share your own screen. We have, all we have is what was submitted to us. And if we don't have a plot plan, it's a little bit hard to make an informed decision about the question of side yard insufficient. What, what is, well, why don't you, I mean, as long as we're started, what is the dimension between the, the addition and the, and the plot on the side yard? What is the side yard dimension?
Ten point two feet from the addition to the property line on the side.
It's what? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Ten point two feet.
Ten point two feet, and what's required?
I believe it's ten feet.
Okay. Um, that seems, I'm having a little bit of trouble making sense of this, because the BPDA suggested that there was a encroachment on the, on the side yard that was significant. Mr. Hampton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Like the board, we did not receive a plot plan either, so the planners were looking, trying to see how much this would encroach into a side yard setback. And it almost looks like it would take that entire side yard out with the open spaces.
But basically, we're all swinging blind here, right? Without a...
Pretty much. We tried to figure it out, we just couldn't.
Okay. Should we defer this one, too?
Uh, so, yes. To the, to the applicant, in order to make a useful, thoughtful decision about this, we need, we need a survey, a plot plan that shows what the side yard encroachment is given the new addition, so we're gonna have...
And also, if you can please note on your elevations, what is the height to your highest peak?
Yeah, no, I, I one hundred percent understand that. I'm not sure what the, what, what got dropped, but we one hundred percent included survey.
I, I don't know, I don't know what to tell you. These are what we have, this is what the architects have viewed, and this is what's on the screen. So, I, it's unfortunate, but I think we're gonna have to, I'm gonna have to entertain a motion to defer.
Done, moved.
Sir, second?
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Marazza?
Yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Agiero?
Yes.
And I, too, am in favor. I, I'm sorry, but we, we really need this to make a useful decision. Thank you.
We'll have a date of December sixth at eleven thirty.
Make sure you get, you get that information in.
I'll say that again.
Uh, calling the next case, calling DOA one one eight three two seven seven sixty-eight Rose Street. This is a rectory six unit.
Mark, Mr. Fortune, this is a deferral.
Okay. Uh, name and add, for the record, calling DOA one one eight three two seven seven sixty-eight Rose Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Thirty-John Puligini, ten Phillips Road in Braintree. On behalf of the applicant for sixty-eight Rose Street, we're asking for a, we're asking for a deferral because the project was advertised incorrectly, and it has to be...
Okay, I mean, the, the truth is, Mr. Puligini, you don't have to have an explanation.
Okay, I got it, yeah.
Okay, can I have a motion?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second, Eric? Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Marazza?
Yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Agiero?
Yes.
And I, too, am in support of the motion, and the motion passes.
Uh, date will be December sixth at eleven thirty.
Thank you very much.
Calling the last case, the nine thirty, calling DOA one three four nine five one nine three eleven to three fifteen Washington Street. This is a renovation of a second-floor and existing three-story plus basement, ex used building. This would be converting the office space on the second floor to four one-bedroom units. The violation Article fifty-one, section sixteen, use of regulations, Article fifty-one, section seventeen, dimensional regulations, and Article fifty-one, section fifty-six, off-street parking is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is George Maranti. I represent Phasers Three Eleven Limited Partnership. Principals there are Paul Sullivan, John Driscoll, and Lawrence Bolz. Joining me on today's hearing is the project architect Derek Rubenov. Mr. Chairman, members, my clients are the owners of the building at three eleven, three fifteen Washington Street in Brighton. The building is currently a vacant two-story building, most recently occupied by a liquor store on the ground floor and offices above. The proposal is to convert the second-story office use into four one-bedroom apartments. The unit sizes would be approximately seven hundred seventy-four, seven hundred ninety-three, seven hundred ninety-four, and eight hundred six square feet. Nothing is currently proposed for the ground floor of the building, which is not within the scope of the permit application or this appeal. Building is located within an NS one neighborhood shopping sub-district under Article fifty-one, the Alston-Brighton Neighborhood zoning article. Second-story residential use is thus conditional under the code. Relief is also necessary for insufficient usable open space and insufficient off-street parking. The building occupies essentially the entire site, making the introduction of open space and parking impossible. The site is appropriate for the proposed second-floor residential use, as there are many mixed-use buildings in the immediate area with up to three stories of residential uses above ground-floor commercial. And the site is served by numerous bike route, bus routes and bike routes, with six bus stops within one block, and is within walking distance of the Warren Street stop on the MBTA's Green Line. I'll call and take any questions that the board may have.
Okay, so you're only looking for approval for what is proposed on the second floor, not the, not the first floor, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, but, I mean, I assume it's the same owner. One, you know, with the long term, are they looking to keep it commercial? What's the...
Yes, sorry, the ground floor will remain commercial. My parents are currently, sorry, my clients are currently working with potential tenants, but they do wish to convert the second floor and hold it as residential apartment.
Okay, and there's, there's no change to the footprint of the building?
No, no change.
Okay, all right. Fairly straightforward. How are the drawings, Ms. Bede Marazza?
Mr. Chair, the plans are adequate. I just had a question regarding the units. Are they rentals or homeownership?
Yes, these will be rental units.
Great, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm done. Thanks.
Okay. And access to the second floor is through the, through the lobby?
Uh, it's through the, through the ground floor residential entrance.
Yeah, okay. Okay, any questions to the board? Uh, is anyone here to testify, either in favor or opposition?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Frank Mendoza from Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services here, Alston-Brighton Liaison. The applicant fulfilled their Butters meeting and civic group meetings. No Butters attended the Butters meeting, and for their civic group meeting, they received the support of the Brighton-Alston Improvement Association. As always, we're deferring to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, I do have one right to hand.
Okay.
Annabella, if, can state your name and address for the record, please?
Chair, members of the board, Annabelle Gomes from the Brighton-Alston Improvement Association. We'd like to go with record and support. We support adding residential to Brighton Center. We think it's important for the businesses to have people living there. We support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have one more? Gary?
We're getting a fair amount of background noise again. If there's anybody who is unmuted, make sure that there's no commentary in the background.
Okay, I guess that failed. I'm not sure what's going on, or his end. We lost him.
Okay, so we don't have, we don't have initial testimony?
No, we do not.
Okay, then I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Marazza?
Yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Agiero?
Yes.
I am in support, also, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I call the ten thirty hearings, calling the first case, calling DOA one three eight zero nine nine three three seventy-seven Maverick Street. This is a change of occupancy for four units, renovating the existing structure, erect a rear addition with rear roof decks. Violation Article fifty-three, section fifty-six, off-street parking insufficient. Article fifty-three, section eight, MF5 within in a three F two-thousand sub-district. Article twenty-seven C, this is in East Boston High Claws. Article fifty-three, section nine, the additional lot area is insufficient. Article fifty-three, section nine, the floor area ratio is excessive. Article fifty-three, section nine, the side yard is insufficient. And Article fifty-three, section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's Richard Lynn, two forty-five Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of petitioner David Gerstman. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is a pre-existing three-family dwelling. We can jump to page four. We can look at the current conditions of the existing site. Our proposal would involve a complete rehabilitation and renovation of this existing structure. This is located in a flood hazard district, and therefore, no habitable space is permitted in the lower level. We have looked at how to address this building in a way to not only create the upgrades that would be necessary for life safety and a full renovation of the building, but to also preserve the height, keeping this at three stories, including the roof decks that we're proposing without head hazards. If we jump to the next slide, here we go, yeah. So, what we're showing is a rendering of the proposed change. This is pretty consistent with the architecture along, the new buildings along this section of Maverick Street. And we feel that, you know, the design and what we're showing here is, is definitely a change from what presently exists today. This will ultimately be, as the secretary indicated, four units. It's currently three. We're proposing a two-bedroom on the first level, a three-bedroom, about fourteen hundred square feet on the second level, and two single bedrooms roughly between six hundred eighty and seven hundred and twenty square feet on the upper level. Each of the upper levels will have access to a private roof deck. The lower levels will have rear decks as well as access to the rear courtyard. With respect to the relief that's necessary, Mr. Chairman, because this is located in a three F two-thousand district, we do meet the requirements for minimum lot size at three thousand square feet. However, we do require a variance to change the occupancy from three to four units. Our proposed FAR, which is generally consistent with the FARs of the surrounding neighborhood, is at one point five nine. It's in excess of the one that's permitted under the code. While we do have a side yard condition that presently exists at about, just under our foot on the right side, we will extend the back of the building, as you can see in this elevation here, to bring the building back a little bit further. Because we're gonna maintain that plane, any of that new addition will also require relief from the side yard setback of two point five feet. With respect to the rear yard, although we do propose the decks, as you can see in this elevation, we are showing about twenty-three feet in the rear yard, just slightly below the thirty foot that's required. But again, that will be used by the lower, the lower levels, units one and two, for shared courtyard access. Last but not least is parking. Building presently is a non-conforming parking condition, no parking space is located. Because Article fifty-three only requires an additional parking space for the proposed additional unit, we're requesting a variance in the one parking space. Even if it were feasible to add parking, we would be creating a curb cut on the street, which would actually be taking away on-street parking from the surrounding neighborhood. I'm happy to answer any questions from the board, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, can we go back, scroll back up to the rendering from, looking at it from the rear? Right there, yeah. It looks, are there two separate roof decks on the, on the building?
That, that is correct. So, we do have the two single-bedroom units on the upper level, Mr. Chairman. The first roof deck that's closer to the front is accessed by a hatch. We are showing a spiral staircase. I did hear the architect mention in a previous case that the spiral staircase was not something that was preferred. So, we're happy to revisit that and look at a hatch as well for that, for that roof.
Okay, okay. No, 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 you answered my question. I, I couldn't see how the access to the front one was being done, but I, I now see there's a little, little bubble there in the middle. That, that must be the hatch. Okay, yes, and then, and there's the issue of the rear one, of whether that should be internal or exterior spiral. But we'll, we'll, okay, we'll deal with that. And these units on the top, so the, so the, other than the extension to the rear, the footprint is, is unchanged?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. We originally had proposed this as a four-story building. Through the community process, we agreed to maintain the three-story height based upon comments that we heard.
All right, so, so in terms, contextual, it's roughly the same height as the neighboring building, budding buildings?
That is correct.
All right, and, and there's no habitable space in the basement? What is, are all the utilities there?
So, this will be designed in accordance with the flood, flood plain requirements. I believe internal utilities in the units, as well as just storage and, you know, permissible use in the basement only for floods out.
Okay, that was my question. So, so all the utilities will be internal to the individual units?
That's the plan.
All right. Okay, um, thank you. Ms. Bede Marazza, how are the drawings?
Mr. Chair, the drawings are adequate, and you pretty much raised all the questions I had. So, no further comment.
Sorry about that.
No, it's okay. It's good.
All right, any questions in the board? Is there anyone here to testify in favor or in opposition?
Yes. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is Natalia Benitez with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office hosted an Butters meeting for this project on May fourth. We had two Butters participate in the meeting, and both opposed the project due to the density of the street and the lack of parking, but most importantly, the lack of the character of the street, meaning the design. They didn't really like the design. The applicant also met with the Jeffers Point Neighborhood Association twice. The membership ultimately voted to oppose the project, with eleven residents voting in favor and eighteen voting in opposition. The residents opposing felt that the project was too big for the lot size. The lack of parking in the building does not fit with the character of the neighborhood. And at this moment, our office will need to refer judgment to the board. Thank you.
So, Mr. Lynn, let me ask you a question in the wake of those comments. I thought you had said that the design was sort of in keeping with other buildings in the neighborhood, but it appears that some people feel it's out of context.
I, I, I suppose I can't argue with people's opinions on the issue of design, Mr. Chairman. There is a photo, I don't know if you want to go back to it, and if you have your iPads, I'm looking at the context maybe. The building immediately to our right is of similar design and architecture. There are a number of buildings, as you go down Maverick Street, that also have very similar design. The original proposal for this project was calling for four stories at five units.
No, no, that I understand.
Yeah, I think if you look at...
Oh, but, Mr. Lins, let me interrupt you right there.
Sure.
But that picture that we're looking at on the right, that's a rendering. Is there a proposal for a sort of gazebo-like structure on top of these roof decks?
I'm sorry, that's not a rendering. That's the building to our right. We're showing the existing...
Oh, that's the one to the left, okay.
No gazebo proposed.
No gazebo. Next story has a gazebo. We can get, we're just proposing that.
Okay, all right, no, 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 I mean, so you answered my question. All right, and is there anyone else who would like to testify if for or against the project?
Mr. Chair Secretary, we have those letters at the Mayor's Office.
Okay, thank you.
I believe the BPDA can also weigh in, Mr. Chairman.
Yep. And no other raised hands, Mr. Hampton?
No other, no raised hands.
Would you like me to go on record, Mr. Chairman? Yeah, we recommended approval with design review, hoping that the access to the roof deck would be internally instead of the spiral roof deck, spiral stairs.
So for the rear deck, so you have to, a hatch for each one? Yep.
Yes.
All right, if there's no other testimony, then I approve the motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with a proviso of BPDA Design Review to begin to address some of the concerns of the residents in terms of this context and to provide interior access to the roof, not through an exterior spiral stair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Vetta Barraza?
Yes.
Ms. Dawn? Ms. Dawn?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Ogiero?
Yes.
And I am also in favor of the motion passes.
Thank you very much.
On your next case, calling DOA 132-8495, 7 to 9 Newbury Street. Just to remove the existing two-story storefront and replace it with a new bunked-out two-story storefront addition, erect a two-story exterior elevator shaft. The violation, Article 9, Section 1, reconstruction and extension of a non-conforming building. Article 15, Section 15-1, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 13, Section 1, the front yard is insufficient. And Article 32, Section 4, this is a G-Cloud applicability. Name and address for the record.
Mr. Chair, I need to recuse myself.
Mr. Chair, I will also need to recuse myself. This is Eric.
Motion to defer.
Yes, we need a motion to defer because we are now a four-member board, so...
You may leave.
Does that make good motion to defer?
Yeah, I get it.
Second.
Color roll. Do we lose mine?
I think we lost.
We throw it in. He's going to have to disconnect and reconnect. I mean...
We can, well, obviously, the...
You gotta give him a, we give him a date.
We'll have a date of December 6th at 11:30.
And we'll have seven members that day?
That's correct.
Okay, cool.
Mr. Chair, if I may, Ryan Gossett on behalf of the applicant. I didn't know if there was any possibility of an earlier date prior to December 6th, or if that's the earliest possible.
Unfortunately, we are at that, you know, at that point where...
All right, I apologize. My, my internet was getting into a fight with me, but I think, I think for the moment, I prevail. Okay, so we have a motion to defer. I'm taking a roll call vote, Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Well, I can't ask, Ms. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Ogiero?
Yes.
And myself, that's four votes, but under the circumstances, we need to defer with the recusals and administrative defer request anyway.
Yes, and it's going to be December 6th at 11:30, and it's a seven-member board that day.
Thank you.
Calling next case, calling DOA 131-9691, 340 West Second Street. This repair replays existing rooftop deck on flat rubber roof, expand the existing deck by 600 square feet. The new deck is set on a sleeper stud and flat rubber roof. Deck is to be composed, and it's going to be a five-foot-tall parapet circling the entire roof. The violation, Article 68, Section 8, the rear yard is sufficient. Name and address for the record.
This is Jerry Piero, Piero Construction, 875 Mass Ave, Boston.
All right, can you tell us what you're proposing?
In regards to the parapet wall, the parapet wall is already there. It's about 56 inches high, surround the entire building.
Is it, is it solid, or...
Yes, solid, solid wall.
What's it made of?
Probably two-by-six or metal stud capped off, and the inside has clockwork on the inside. It's probably about a foot thick.
All right, but it's in the existing condition?
It is, in the existing condition, around the perimeter of the whole entire building.
Okay.
There are existing four, I think it's four decks up there. Right now, basically a sleeper, and then a decking on top of it. And none of them have any rails on them at all. What, I'm a pool?
Yeah, go ahead. Hello? Mr. DePiero, we've, we've lost you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, now I can hear you.
Okay, sorry about that. So I'm proposing it just to repair the existing deck that's there, and then add on additional, as you can see in the structural drawing.
Okay, so we're looking at the top right, the existing deck...
Is a smaller portion.
Smaller, so the proposed deck is, you're almost tripling the size, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. And there's no, and is it all not invisible from the street because of the parapet?
It is, yes. It's only a sleeper, which is a two-by-four, I think it has, yeah, the two-by-four, and then the decking on top of it.
Okay, so it's a completely obstructive view from the street?
Yes, correct, correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Vetta Barraza, how are the drawings?
Mr. Chair, the drawings look accurate. Well, not really accurate, because it shows a parapet as lower in height. But also, looking at the Google Earth image, the parapet looks still very, the height looks less than, than what was just mentioned in terms of five feet. So I, it would be great just to get that confirmed, or we can put that in a motion.
I can go back out there and put a tape to it and give you a measurement.
Okay, so, yeah, you had said 56 inches?
Yes, correct.
Okay, all right, any other questions on the board? The, is there anyone here to testify?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm Anna Waite with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Owen asked how an abutter's meeting for 340 West Second Street, Unit 25, on August 1st. The meeting had no attendees except for city council staff. I received a call from a direct abutter who opposes this deck being expanded and who said they never received a flyer about the abutter's meeting. The St. Vincent's Neighborhood Association is strongly opposed to the expansion of this roof deck. At this time, we'd like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Okay, can you, the strong opposition is based on what?
Size, access, and noise.
Okay, and can you, can you tell us whether it is the parapet wall is really high enough to obstruct a view, or is that not the case?
I do not know, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right, no, that's fine, thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair Secretary, here, we do have one letter from Councilor Flynn's office and opposing the project.
Okay. Anybody else want to testify?
Mr. Chair, I do have one raised hand.
Okay.
Anna, if you could state your name and address for the record, please?
Good morning, Madam, the chair, members of the board. Anna Calerón from Council President Flynn's office. The councilor would like to go on record in opposition. Roof decks has been a long source of loud, loud noise at all hours and disturbances and trash removal issues for South Boston, which were exacerbated by the significant degree by the pandemic. South, South Boston has endured significant quality-of-life issues for years due to loud, noise parties. Both the, and Neighborhood Association have expressed opposition to the proposal and indicated that granting approval for the expansion of a roof deck will sit about precedent for several other roof decks, both at the very same building and in the surrounding neighborhood to increase the noise with further impact to the neighbors. Moreover, neighbors reported complaints as some of the clients were at the others' meeting, indicating that the proposal could be too diligent. The result, attendance was light for the meeting, with neighbors unaware of this plan to expand the roof deck. The office has been record opposing roof decks and expansions like this over the last several years due to aforementioned quality of life issues. Loud parties are all up.
Okay, again, getting a lot of background noise. Okay.
The councilor opposed. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Anna.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan for City Council Lodge, Michael Flaherty. Due to the Article 68 violations, as well as echoing the sentiments of Councilor Flynn's office and the overall neighborhood opposition, the council elects to write in opposition.
Thank you. Anyone else?
It's just Jerry Piero. I'd just like to...
No, 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 no.
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. I mean, we know what the project is. I mean, this is a pretty substantial expansion of, of an existing deck. What is the current, well, Mr. Piero, I do have one question. The current access to this deck is what?
It's through a headhouse.
Existing headhouse?
Yes, yes, and like...
Was existing, was existing score footage again for the existing deck?
That's 14, let me see.
I think the dimensions were on the drawings.
Yeah, I think it was 14 by 16, about 260 square feet.
Oh, I see, yeah, it's about 300.
Yeah, 300?
Actually, actually, the, the dimensions were not on the drawing, but the nearby existing decks are noted, which is about 300 square feet.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and as I said, the expansion is some 600, so it's...
Yes, correct.
Tripling the size.
So four times.
Yeah, okay. All right, can I have a motion, please?
I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA Design Review to reduce the deck size and to, and to confirm that there's no, and without a building code violation. So that's just to make sure that the parapet's at 42 inches.
Okay, you have a suggestion about how much to reduce the deck size?
I would let BPDA Design Review look at that closely.
Okay.
Thanks.
But I think that would address some of the residential concerns.
Yeah, I think that's, Mr. Hampton, I'm sure you're capable of handling that. If, when the, the test is... All right, there's a second. Do I not hear a second? I guess there is no second. Can I have another motion?
I'll make a motion for dial without prejudice.
Okay, and is there a second to that?
I'll second that, Eric.
Okay, Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Vetta Barraza?
No.
Ms. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Ogiero?
Yes.
And I support that too, so, so you'll need to come back with, I think, I think the sentiment is for a significantly reduced proposal. All right, let's move on.
I call the next three cases into the record, calling DOA 134-2905, 1160 Blue Hill Avenue. There are two companion cases, DOA 134-292, 7th Frontenac Street, and DOA 134-2993, 11th Frontenac Street. This is for 1160 Blue Hill Ave. This is a change in use and scope, consists of interior cleanup of converting existing space into Citizens Bank with accessory ATM, accessory drive-through ATM, telephone line offices, restroom, break room. The violation is Article 60, Section 16, ancillary parking of neighboring lots, it's forbidden, use is forbidden. Article 60, Section 16, the use conditional of the bank. This is for 7th Frontenac. The scope of the work consists of reconfiguring the existing parking lot to create new delineated parking spaces and create accessory drive-through bank ATM. The violations are the same as the first, and 11th Frontenac is the same purpose and scope, I'm sorry, and violations. Name and address for the record.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Rebecca Lee. I'm an attorney with Mins, with an address of One Financial Center. And this proposal involves a long vacant floor of fast-food restaurant building. No changes to the exterior of the building. The reason for the coupling of these zoning requests is that although this is one property, you can go back to the prior plan. It's three discrete lots, even though it operates as one. The owner, our landlord, has not consolidated the lots. Therefore, we end up with ancillary parking that is in effect functioning as accessory parking. This property has been vacant for over a decade. It is proposed to be converted into a full-service citizens' bank. It is in a neighborhood shopping district with many commercial uses nearby. It's also in a gateway overlay district, which points to the prominent location in the Matapan community and the urgent need for this to be revitalized and turned into a use that will serve the community. These are existing elevations of the building, which was a former KFC. And as we move forward with this presentation, you'll also see what the current conditions are like, which are pretty dismal, both with respect to the building. And if we continue on, you'll also see the current state of the parking lot and the environments, which is basically an attraction for nuisance uses, which disturb nearby residential neighborhoods. So Citizens has signed a lease and is prepared to move forward with extensive interior renovations to convert this into a bank branch. You'll see the existing building footprints, a traffic pattern that has vehicles coming through with 11 parking spaces, and they can drive to a drive-up ATM machine, and then traffic leaving can separately move beyond that and then exit onto Blue Hill Avenue in a right-turn-only configuration. So as you can see, there will be extensive landscape improvements as well, a much smaller trash enclosure, because it won't have all of the debris and trash related to fast food. There will also be a nighttime depository. So we do not feel that this will be detrimental to the neighborhood. In fact, it will enhance the neighborhood, provide a community service, and also result in the upgrade and revitalization of a long-vacant prominent property. And I have members of the Citizens team from the real estate, security, and other realms, including the area vice president, in case the board has any questions for them as well. But here are elevations of what it will look like. Signage application will come in separately.
Okay, well, you just answered one of my questions. So there will be no change in the exterior other than signage?
Correct, correct. I mean, the...
And that's going to be a separate application?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. Well, let me say, first off, going, given that a number of banks, including unfortunately my own, are eliminating branches in minority neighborhoods, it is very nice to see that Citizens is heading in the opposite direction. So I just, you know, for the record, that's, that's a plus. What hours will be, what will be the hours of operation?
It'll be typical bank branch hours. I'm not sure that we've allowed Alejandro Recepo to be a panelist, Stephanie. He can speak to more specifics of that. There is a 24-hour ATM lobby.
No, I understand the 24-hour ATM, sometimes some branches seem to be, they have maybe one evening a week or Saturday morning of making it available for people who are working full-time during the day. Is that envisioned here?
My understanding is that the bank branch hours here will be similar to the existing bank branches at Cognit Square.
Okay.
Stephanie, can we make Alejandro Recepo a panelist so he can specifically answer that question? He's all set.
Nate, can you give your name and address for the record? Hello?
Okay, where did he?
Hello?
He was elevated to a panelist. I'm not sure where he went.
Did you unmute yourself?
Alejandro?
All right, well, maybe he can get on. Let's keep going with, with the questions.
Okay.
Alejandro, hi, this is Alejandro.
There he goes.
Okay, Alejandro, can you tell us what the hours of operation of this branch will be?
Nine to four, Monday to Friday, nine to 12 on Saturday, closed on Sunday.
Okay, so there is, so there are Saturday morning hours, all right, that's good.
What about the... What about the drive-up ATM and the ATM access? Are those twenty-four hours or do those get shut off at some point?
ATM access and drive-through is twenty-four hours.
Okay. Do you have monitoring in the parking lot with cameras and stuff to make sure people aren't loitering there, especially after hours, that they just come in, do their business, and leave?
I believe we have Derek Lemire from security on. And yes, these are monitored. But Derek can answer to live monitoring on that.
Is Derek a panelist?
Derek has not checked in. I don't have Derek here. Derek?
All right, well, let's...
There he goes. He's on.
He's on?
Mm-hmm.
Can you name an address for the record? And please respond to Mr. Ujero's question.
Derek?
Yes, good morning. This is Derek Lemire. I'm at One Citizens Bank Way in Johnson Road Island. I am on the phys... I'm a physical security manager for Citizens Bank. To answer the question that was posed, yes, there will be cameras on the interior and exterior of the building that'll exceed federal regulations and they will be recorded twenty-four by seven with a ninety-day retention period.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Ujero?
Yeah, I just... I've seen in the past where AT... But branches where people don't just use the ATM, they hang out there afterwards and things like that. So, I didn't know if there was some monitoring that happens after hours where if people are loitering in the parking lot, they would keep people moving. That was...
Citizens also has a third-party vendor that runs security car patrols. And so, this branch will be added to their route as other branches are as well.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on the board? How are the drawings, Ms. Bede Barazza?
Mr. Chair, the drawings are adequate.
Okay, is anyone here to testify either in favor or opposition of the project?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Eric Jones, the mayor's office of neighborhood services. The applicant for eleven-sixty Blue Hill Ave had an abutters meeting on August fifteenth of this year, and they met with the Greater Matapan Neighborhood Council and the Lucerne Gardens Neighborhood Association. The GMNC voted to support the project with a proviso for direct input from the Boston Transportation Department regarding the exiting of the parking lot onto Blue Hill Ave. Lucerne Gardens elected to support the project as long as they can ensure that they will secure the parking lot as they do have concerns about security issues of the neighborhood. We do have a total of one letter of support and zero letters of opposition. At this time, the mayor's office would like to defer to the judgment of the board on this matter. Thank you.
The chair's secretary, we do have a couple of letters of support.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan for City Council Lodge, Michael Flaherty, Council of Lactara in support.
Mr. Chair, I do have two raised hands.
Go ahead.
Gary, you've been unmuted. If you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Gary Walker. I'm... I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Gary Walker, electrician and technician, vocal one-on-three. I like to speak in strong support. Citizens has been a great user of our services over the years, creating many, many jobs for the local city and Boston area. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
All right, we have one more. Fatima, if you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Hey, good morning. Fatima Alen-Slam, thirty-four Bourbon Street, Marytown. The GMNC has... supports this proposal with proviso that the Boston Transportation Department reviewed it. There was concern during our discussions about the exiting and entering and exiting, both coming out to Blue Hill Avenue instead of turning onto Frontenac Street. Our understanding is that Frontenac Street is a one-way, but we still believe that the BTD should have the last say as that is a very busy section of Blue Hill Avenue. I, by the way, walked that area from Matapan Square to B-Three six days a week. So, I'm well aware of the traffic, both persons and cars. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, can I have a motion, please?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. Is it possible to have BTD talk about this project? Because we did receive some feedback from Hampton in regards to traffic wise.
I mean, I think what we could do is have a proviso that BTD review.
Do you want to read Jeff Hampton's recommendation?
Mr. Hampton?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you very much. Our recommendations for approval with proviso, we're concentrating more on the parking area rather than the use. The signage will come to us anyway from ISD, but we recommended that a ten-foot curb cut be on Blue Hill Ave, that it's made one-way, and that the accompanying companion curb cut be on Frontenac and limited also to ten feet. And then, of course, we'd ask for screening, buffering, and, you know, previous surface.
Okay. All right, well, all that can be in a motion, so...
So, well, with that, I just wanted to have that on record. I'd like to make a motion for approval with two proviso. One is BTD review of the parking layout in terms of ensuring that there's good traffic flow and pedestrian safety. And the second is to ensure that there's adequate lighting and security when there's transactions of money. So, that includes deposit box, ATM. And then, I guess the third one would be screening at the rear of residential property.
Yeah. Okay, very good. Is there a second to that?
I'll second. I assume that includes a PDA Design Review anyways. Just... Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Ujero?
Yes.
And I too am in support and again, am pleased to see that there is additional branch in a minority community which have been under served in the past. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling DOA one-three-four-five-eight-two-one, twenty-four fifty-four C-Mon Road. This is rebuilding the existing porches at the rear of the building. Enclose the first floor porch for additional living area for unit one. Article sixty-five, section nine, the lot areas insufficient. Article sixty-five, section nine, the additional lot area is insufficient. Article sixty-five, section nine, the floor area ratio is excessive. Article sixty-five, section nine, usable space is insufficient. Article sixty-five, section nine, the side yard is sufficient. And Article sixty-five, section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Timothy Burke. I have a business address of one-forty-two Berkeley Street in Boston. I'm the architect for the project, representing the owner, Jose Garcia.
All right, you want to tell us a little bit about the proposal?
Yes, this is a traditional three-decker. It has three units, each one's eleven-hundred-and-thirty square feet. As you could see on the plot plan, due to the unusual shape and size of the lot is what triggers a lot of these existing non-conformities. We're not planning to expand the footprint of the house, but instead, we're... It's kind of triggered by the decrepit condition of the rear porches. They need to be rebuilt. And at this time, the owner, who lives on the first floor, would like to enclose that portion of the first floor since he has a growing family and is in much need of additional living space. The first floor uses the yard and they take great care of it. They are very well-liked in the neighborhood. And then, the upper two levels will still have their balconies for outdoor space.
Are the... Is the size of the porches going to stay the same?
That is correct. There'll be no change to the overall footprint of the building.
Okay, that's an interesting plot plan.
Yes, it is. I think they squeezed that one in at the end of the run, yes.
Yeah, I guess so. Yeah, can we scroll up, please? Yeah. Okay. All right, well, it seems pretty straightforward, Ms. Bede Barazza. Did you get a chance to look at the drawings?
Yes, the drawings are adequate.
Okay, any questions? Any questions on the board? Anyone here to testify either for or against?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. George Swin with the mayor's office in neighborhood services. Our office hosted an abutters meeting for the proposal in July. Inherited support from residents. The St. Mark's Area Civic Association has issued a letter of support. At this time, our office would defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is Joe McGeckren with City Council, Frank Baker's office. Would like to go on record in support.
Mr. Chair's secretary here, we do have a support letter.
No letters of opposition?
Letters of opposition, I see.
Okay. All right, anybody else want to testify? If not, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
Thank you. Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Ujero?
Yes.
And I am too in support. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next two cases, calling DOA one-three-six-one-three-three-six for Ashmont Park. There's a companion case, DOA one-three-six-one-three-four-three-six Ashmont Park. This is for four and six, the same purpose and same violation. This erect a new three-story dwelling with three units, front and rear decks, three parking spots at rear. There's an easement proposed for driveway access to rear parking. The violation is Article sixty-five, section nine, usable space is insufficient. And Article sixty-five, section nine, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Attorney John Folgini on behalf of the applicant for four and six Ashmont Park in Dorchester. The zoning here is three-family decker, three thousand. Four Ashmont Park is four thousand one hundred and nineteen square feet. Six Ashmont Park is four thousand two hundred and nineteen square feet. For point of contact, this property is a three-minute walk to Ashmont's train station and they're one street away from Dorchester Avenue. As you all may remember, a different proposal came before this board in March of this year. And the board and the PDA recommendation made it clear they wanted any proposal to adhere to the three FD zoning. At that time, we were proposing four units in each building and had nine zoning violations associated with this application. Then, current proposal is to build one three-family building on each lot. Unit three and both units in buildings will have a private roof deck. And as you will see from architectural drawings, we have revised our application going from four units to three. And the design now conforms with the three FD designation. Additionally, each unit will come with a designated parking spot and conforms... And the project conforms to all parking and dimension requirements with the exception of side yard. And that is between the two buildings. To limit curb paths on the street, we're doing a joint easement for parking in between. That does not affect the abutters. And also, open space, what is required is five hundred and seventy-six... Five hundred and seventy-six square feet per dwelling unit. We're opposing three hundred and forty square feet. Again, we went from nine violations to two. And as you will see from the PDA recommendation, they are now recommending approval with designer due. The last time, they recommended denial. As far as the unit programming, unit one, four hundred and ten square feet, three-bed, two-bath. Unit two, fourteen oh five square feet, three-bed, two-bath. Unit three, fifteen hundred and forty square feet, three-bed, two-bath. And finally, these units will be condominiums, so it will be home ownership for this neighborhood. Any questions, I'm happy to answer. And I think Peter Vanco from Vanco Studio Architects is on the call.
Okay, well, you answered most of my questions. I recall this case and I recall that we rejected it in the form that you presented last time. This seems to be speaking to some of the changes that were requested. So, I'm glad to see that. Remind me once again of the size of the units?
The units length, they're roughly fourteen, ten, fourteen oh five, and fifteen forty. And they're all three beds, two baths.
Okay, and the basement was used for utilities, storage?
Yes, mechanicals, correct.
Yeah, okay. All right, how are the drawings, Ms. Bede Barazza?
Mr. Chair, the drawings are adequate. I do have a question regarding trash. Where do you imagine trash would be located for these two property?
Peter Vanco is on the call. He could answer that.
Uh, sorry, John, it's Eric Zacherson.
I'm sorry, Eric, I apologize.
It's all right. We had imagined trash...
Just name... Name an address for the record, just...
Yes, Eric Zacherson, nine Zachville Street, Charlestown. Architect of the project. We'd imagined trash adjacent to the rear and trees, imagining that people would probably drop the trash off on their way to their cars.
And then, they would just take it out to the front through the asphalt ramp? Or through the driveway?
Yeah, probably through the driveway, more likely, but could also use the side ramps.
Okay, thank you.
What's the side curb cut for the driveway?
Twelve feet. Twelve feet.
Okay. All right, any other questions on the board? Is there anyone here to testify either in favor or in opposition?
Yes, I'm... Members of the board, George Swin with the mayor's office in neighborhood services. Our office hosted an abutters meeting for the proposal last November and also this past August. Abutters expressed concern in the height and density of the structure and number assigned onto a petition, opposition. A number of neighbors expressed support for more units close to public transit. And the applicant has revised and presented their plans at the neighborhood civic organizations detailing minor zoning violations as recently as last week. The St. Mark's Area Civic Association has issued a letter of opposition. At this time, our office would defer judgment to the board.
Mr. Chair, let me just be clear about this. Was the opposition based on the original proposal or the current proposal?
Opposition still remains, so it's quite contentious, I think. So, both proposals really still currently in the past.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair's secretary here, we do have those letters at the mayor's office. Just go.
In opposition?
Opposition and support.
Okay, and those... And they're based on the current proposal?
Correct.
What I get... Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Joe McGeckren, City Council, Frank Baker's office. Would like to go on record in support of the applicant.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Paul Sullivan for City Council Lodge, Michael Flaherty. Due to the changes made by the component of the council, I'd like to support.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have six raised hands.
Six?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, we'll try to go through all of them, but I would say if people are expressing the same views as someone who came before, then please just register your support or opposition. We don't need to hear the same thing said twice, so let's go ahead.
All right. Roz, if you can state your name and address for the record, please. Roz? Okay. Dale, if you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Dale Sentershell, two Ashmont Park in Dorchester. I'm in Director Abutters. Simply put, these buildings are way too large for this tiny, narrow, dead-end street. We have collected and submitted to the board fifty-seven signatures of abutters and neighborhood association members along with twenty-one pages of detailed opposition to these projects. The opposition includes twenty-six of the thirty purely residential properties in the abutters zone, plus the doctors and dentists office at the corner of Ashmont Park and Ashmont Street. Ashmont Park is the narrowest street in all of Dorchester with a curb-to-curb width of only sixteen feet. It is only two hundred and twenty-four feet long. There are about two dozen streets in Dorchester with widths approximating twenty feet and the remainder are at least twenty-five and a half feet wide. When any car is parked on the street, it presents a problem for emergency and city utility vehicles getting down the street. Unless they drive up on the sidewalk, they're too wide to get past the first car. In 2014, a resident fell off the roof and while the ambulance was able to get the house, a fire truck had to stop in Ashmont Street. And a similar accident for fire issues happened on Pepperell Street on Sunday with the fire there. That street is twenty-six and a half feet wide. Paul Burke, the commissioner... Fire commissioner in Austin, said in the Globe yesterday, because of the tight streets, they couldn't get an aerial ladder up there because of the wires in the hole here. Pepperell Street and it are all twenty-six feet wider than on...
Okay, okay, I think, thank you. You've been very clear. And this is... Your opposition continues to be based on the current proposal and not only the previous one, correct? Okay. All right.
All right, next one? Roz, are you on?
And Dale was very articulate in his opposition. Please repeat the things that he said.
Yes.
Uh, yes, uh, Roslyn Gil, 9 Drake Street, and I just approve everything that Dale just mentioned.
Okay, thank you.
Ken, if you can state your name and address for the record, please? Ken?
Hey, Ken Foley? 218, 220 Ashmont Street. I'm for this project.
Thank you.
Dan, you've been unmuted, if you can state your name and address for the record, please?
Dan Rubin, 27 Caruth Street. I'm in support of the project.
Thank you.
Sam, you've been unmuted, if you can state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, uh, this is Sam Thorson, I'm from 229 Center Street, and I approve of this project. I've met both the butters, um, and the developers, and I think it's a great addition to the PV square neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Alex, you've been unmuted, if you can state your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, hi, my name is Claudio Torres. We own Ashmont Park across the street, and also diagonally, diagonally two buildings on Dorchester Ave and Drake Street. And we approve of the project for many reasons. First, the area needs uplifting, and number two, the city needs revenue, and number three, I think all the opposition lacks validity. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
John, you've been unmuted, if you can state your name and address for the record, please? John?
Yes, this is John Kavanaugh, and we, we own property directly across the street, 123 Ashmont Park, and I'm totally opposed to this unit, these, these buildings. I totally agree with Dale, and also the size of the buildings are too big for the street. It's going to add more problems with, as Dale mentioned, trash removal, snow removal, street cleaning, rubbish recycling. So I'm totally in opposition of these two buildings.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is that, is that it?
One more.
Okay.
Linda, Linda, you've been unmuted, if you can state your name and address for the record, please? Linda?
Sorry, sorry, I was, I'm, we, um, we descend to Ashmont Park. I'm totally against these projects. And I think that, um, that the majority of the houses in the butter zone, 26 out of 30, are opposed to this project. Like my husband said, the dentist, the doctor, the pisgpters.
Okay, if you have new information to provide, your husband was very articulate, so we heard it.
That's all, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, can I have a motion, please? Um, go ahead, Joe.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve a BPD design review and, um, maybe some BTD review for some of the issues that some of the neighbors put up, put up?
Uh, I'll second that. Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Rogero?
Yes.
And I too am in favor, the motion passes.
Uh, Mr. Chair, it's now 11:44. Before I call the 11:30, would you like to do your statement?
Uh, we are today a six-member board, uh, full board is seven. Um, so, uh, anyone who requests is entitled to an administrative deferral uh, until such time as, as the board is complete.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just want to make sure we're clear because I don't know how long we're going to get into these cases, but we are going to be missing a board member at 1 o'clock.
I believe that's not till one, so, um.
Yes, but we're already, it's a lot, we haven't even hit the, uh, yeah, four or five cases, well.
Yep.
Okay, uh, I'm going to call the 11:30 cases for any.
Does it end, guys, does it, oh, sorry.
Yeah, sorry, Joe. Uh, I'm going to call the 11:30 cases for any deferrals or withdrawals. If you can give me the address first, this is the 11:30 cases only.
67 Appleton Street, Mr. Secretary.
Thank you, Councilor, for the record, calling DOA 1339798, 67 Appleton Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, members of the board. Uh, Mr. Chairman, Richard Lynn, 245 Summer Street, East Boston, requesting an administrative referral.
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Dong?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Rogero?
Yeah.
And I too am in favor, the motion passes.
This will be heard on December 6th at 11:30.
Also, I have 32 Hobart, Mr. Secretary.
Okay. For the record, calling DOA 1351215, 32 to 32C Hobart Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Richard Lynn's, 245 Summer Street, East Boston, on behalf of petitioner, um, Mr. Chairman, we're requesting withdrawal of 32 Hobart.
Motion for denial without prejudice.
Thank you.
Fortune?
Yes.
Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Dong?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Rogero?
Yeah.
And I too am in favor, the motion passes.
Thank you, we're great there.
Any other deferrals or withdrawals, 30 cases, if you can give me the address first, please?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, for 26 Union Avenue, Jamaica Plain, I'd like to defer.
Okay, thank you. For the record, calling DOA 56540, 226 Union Avenue. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Frederick Vedderline, 26 Union Ave, Jamaica Plain.
Is there a?
Motion to defer.
I'll make a motion to defer.
Second.
Fortune?
Yes.
Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Dong?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Rogero?
Yeah.
And I am in favor, the motion passes.
You'll have a date of, uh, December 13th at 11:30.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals to the 11:30 rediscussions? Address first, please. Bearing none, we'll back to the 10:30s. Calling the next case, calling DOA 1345584, 22 Wilmore Street. This is a new three-family residential building. The violation is Article 60, section eight. Parking and screening and buffering. Article 60, section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 60, section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Article 60, section nine, the side yard is insufficient. Article 60, section nine, usable open space is insufficient. Article 60, section 37, our street parking is insufficient. Article 60, section seven, the lot area is insufficient. Article 60, section nine, the additional lot area is insufficient. And Article 60, section nine, the front yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Shatramash Masami, attorney for the owner, 22 Wilmore LLC. My address is 1359 Hancock Street, uh, Suite 7 in Quincy, Mass. We are here today to ask for relief to build a three-family home on this vacant lot. As you can see from the plans, each unit will have three bedrooms and two baths, in-unit laundry booked up, and will be roughly 1,300 square feet. The first floor will be handicap accessible unit. Basements will be used for storage and will host most of the utilities. The HVAC will be housed in each unit. The existing lot has a curb cut and driveway for two spaces. This is a transit-oriented, um, unit or property. Um, we are by multiple bus routes and the commuter rail. In addition to the front and rear deck space, we are by, uh, within a mile to, uh, public parks. Our building is of similar size and character of the existing three families on both sides of the street. Our lot size is 2337 square feet. These units will be rental units as there remains a need for housing in the community. Please note, there are five lots on this street that are identical to ours and four lots that are smaller than ours, and they all house three family units. Um, this project is an appropriate use of the law. It will not adversely affect the community or create any detriment for butter residents. We have our architect, Alfonso Sierra, with us, um, on the line to answer any additional questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, um, can you just go over the parking again?
Yes, so on adjacent to the right of the building, you'll see the two spaces, um, let's see what slide. So right. Keep going, okay, right there, so it's on the right side of the building.
Okay. All right, and, um, what, it's 10 feet, all right. Uh, is there parking, uh, on the street?
There is.
Wilmore, both sides?
Both sides.
Okay. Um, how are the drawings, Ms. Bede Barazza?
Mr. Chair, the drawings are adequate. I didn't see a survey plot plan, but I figure that this site plan is based on a survey.
Okay, uh, any questions on the board? Is there anyone here to testify either in favor or in opposition?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Eric James of the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant for 22 Wilmore had a butters meeting on August 16th of this year, and they also met with the Greater Madapan Neighborhood Council, which cited, which elected to oppose this project citing lack of access to open space, lack of generous lighting, and at the first floor plan, lack to commitment to the access of, uh, multiple mobilities. And they also met with the Wellington Hill Neighborhood Association, which elected to oppose as well. We have a total of 22 letters of support and two letters of opposition for this project. And at this time, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood, the Mayor's Office would like to defer the judgment, um, to the board on this matter, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chair, Secretary here, we do have some of those letters. We don't have that 22, uh, but we do have letters of support and opposition.
Okay.
My apologies, some of the, um, letters are sent in, some of the files are sent with multiple letters, so it's three, uh, files, but each of them have six, some are between six, and some of them have 10 as well. So they're all inside the same file.
We're fine, we're good, thank you.
Okay, uh, we have any raised hands?
Yes, we do, we have two raised hands.
Morning, Madam, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Uh, Jack Dudley from Council Murphy's office. We're going to side with, uh, the neighborhood council here in opposition. Thank you.
And what is that based on?
Uh, a lack of open space, and we've also heard a butter opposition in our office.
Okay.
All right, Shamshire? You've been unmuted, if you can just state your name and address for the record, please?
Uh, my name is Shamshire Ali, and the address is 62 North Wicken Street, Austin, MA 02134. Uh, my, uh, representative, Emma Niana Abusmane, is here to present this case.
Good morning, thank you all for seeing that we were part of the 10:30.
All right, are you speaking in favor or opposition of the project?
I'm, I'm the contractor.
Okay, put your name and address on the record, please?
Emma Niana Abusmane.
That's a different file. That's not for this project.
Okay.
We're still on 22 Wilmore.
Oh.
Any, uh, anybody else want to speak on 22 Wilmore?
We do have another raised hand.
Okay.
Fatima, if you can raise, I mean, if you can state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Fatima Alisalam, 34 Brumner Street, Maryville. Um, thank you, Chair. The reason the Greater Madapan Neighborhood Council, um, as Eric James had stated, what our main concerns were. There were also concerns when actually visiting the street. Both sides of the street are, there is parking on. Most, but, but there is also both sides of the streets where the cars park half on the sidewalks and half in the street. The width, the entire width of the street curb, the curb is only 24 feet. When you look at each of the homes going down the street, people make decisions about whether or not they're going to put their cars in their driveway or, or if they're going to, uh, use it as a place where they can put chairs to sit out in. And that's what I observed myself. The other, um, concerns were, um, having to do with the lot being so narrow, it is only 2,709 square feet. The parcel, as I had described within, when we met with the development team, we'd asked them, would they be considering a smaller project because of the size of the parcel, and they said that they would not. We understand that the homes that are on the street were big, built earlier in the 19th century. We, in the 20th century, in the early 1900s. But this is, you know, 2022, and most people do expect to have a certain amount of light and space. When we had brought up about the parking, um, again, they say they can fit two parking spaces, and I was told that if when someone wanted to move their car, they could go and ask the other unit to move their car. Um, thinking to myself, you know, every day that would be a bit of a, uh, a stretch to see that all was happening. So that's, that's where it is. Thank you.
All right, uh, is that it, Madam Ambassador?
That's all.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDI, BPDA design review.
I'll second, Eric.
Fortune?
Yes.
Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Dong?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Rogero?
Yes.
And I too am in favor, um, the motion passes. I'm going to suggest that we do the following. I'm, I'm cognizant of the fact that Mr. Robinson has to leave at 1 o'clock. Um, but I think people need a very short stretch break, so I'm going to suggest that we just take a few minutes and, and reconvene around, around noon. Thank you. At noon, and given the fact that Mr. Robinson has to leave at 1:00, and which will give us a five-member board, I think it may make sense to try to deal with that issue now and then go back to our regular agenda.
We'll do it, Mr. Chair. I just want to make sure, are the people on for the court remand? If they could make sure that they let Madam Ambassador know that they're here. If they could raise their hands, that would be great. Okay, I'm going to call this to the record, the court remand for 12:00 p.m. There are four companion cases. Case BOA 1110391, 239 to 243 Hanover Street. BOA 1110403, 1 to 4 Mechanic Court. Case BOA 1110414, 11 Board Alley. And case BOA 1110423, 2 Board Alley. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Richard Joyce. Newman &amp; Newman, 1 McKinley Square, Boston, Mass. 02109. And I believe on the call or joining shortly should be Attorney Bill Ferrulo.
He hasn't checked in yet.
Okay, do we, we, do we have everybody we need on for the case?
No, this is Han. Is he just logged in as Brian? Richard, yeah?
No, it should be William or Bill Ferrulo.
No.
I can try giving him a quick call to make sure that he's logging in.
Okay.
All right, I mean, the court remand was scheduled for noon, so it is now 12:04. If he's not out in a couple of minutes, we should probably go back to the the regular agenda until he's here. We, you know, we're running up against time constraints.
All right, Mr. Chair, we can go back.
Let's do one more case and then see if everybody's ready.
Okay. Calling next case for the 1030, case BOA 1374777, 7 Dana Avenue. This erects a new 27-unit multifamily building with elevator access over below-grade parking garage. Enclosed parking garage with a two-story, 13-car parking elevator conveyor system. Violates Article 69, Section 29,街道街 parking and loading, and Article 69, Section 29.5,街道街 parking design. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Attorney John Poggini on behalf of the applicant. 7 Dana Avenue, High Park. The zoning in this neighborhood is neighborhood shopping, too. The lot size is 13,633 square feet. The proposal is to raise existing vacant buildings, construct a new 27-unit building with 30 parking spaces and 30 for bicycle spaces. The violations, this first came before us, we thought it was a zoning compliant. As we, the first one was parking. We were cited for maneuverability because we're using a stacked parking system, which you see on many projects today. It is simply that the zoning code hasn't caught up with technology. And as one person at ISD said, is we don't punish technology. The other was loading. We have a loading bay. However, the plans of US, that we would have to back into the loading bay, which I believe you have to back into every loading bay, but, you know, that is, I guess, subjective violations. As I stated, the building will have 27 units. There will be nine two-beds, 18 one-beds. The first floor will have a lobby, leasing, management office, trash room, and bike room. The average size of a one-bed is 765 square feet. The average size of a two-bed is 908 square feet. This proposal went through a robust Article 80 process and was approved by the BPDA in June of this year. We are providing almost 20% affordability with income requirements of not more than 70% AMI. And those will be three one-beds and two two-beds. And additionally, we're also contributing to a Blue Light Station for the community. Any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Yeah, okay, well, you answered a bunch of the questions. So when all is said and done, once again, what precisely are the violations?
Maneuverability for getting into your, you know, for the stacked parking system.
Yep, yep.
And then maneuverability for, and a loading bay, that's it. Not no dimension left.
Okay, all right. So any other questions that we have about the project in general actually won't, don't trigger any, any biofictions. All right, well, given that, how are the drawings, Ms. Better Barazza?
Mr. Chair, the drawings are adequate.
Okay, are there any questions in the board? Is Mr. D'Amico on? Does, do you want to talk about the issues of the maneuverability in the loading bay?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, both D'Amico, BTD. The stacking design is something that's becoming more popular. And my review of the parking design, it does work.
Okay, and the, and the loading bay, the rear entrance, that's fairly standard?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Okay, anyone, anyone want to testify in favor or opposition?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. This is Danielle Fonseca with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. As Mr. Poggini stated, the project was approved by the BPDA on June 16th. And during the comment period, the proposal did get letters of support and opposition that were submitted on the project page. Our office has received two letters of opposition that have been sent to the board for review as well. One is from an intermediate abutter at 3 Dana Avenue, and the other one is from the High Park Neighborhood Association. Both letters state that they do not believe it fits the current design of the neighborhood, and there are concerns for parking variance, density, and traffic, as well as the removal of a mature tree that's on the property line of 3 and 7 Dana Ave. We've also received 25 signatures in support of this project, which again have been sent to the board for review, stating that the developers have had several meetings with neighbors, and they believe the project seems to be in appropriate use and will be a great addition to the community. And at this time, we wish to defer to the board for judgment. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hampton, with respect to the issue of the design fitting into the, being contextual, did the BPDA have any thoughts on that?
No, it's still ongoing. The design review is always ongoing. So we will look at, if there are more concerns from the community, we will continue to look at that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair Secretary here, we do have those letters that the mayor's office just spoke of.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the board. Jordan Frey is here from Councilor Ricardo Orell's office. I'd like to go on record in support of this. This project is providing almost 20% affordability with really no violations. And mostly everyone's on board with 25 letters of support. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I do have seven raised hands.
Okay, let's, let's go.
Cindy, you've been unmuted. If you can state your name and address for the record.
Good morning, my name is Cindy Tierce. I am here on behalf of Councilor Rudy Jen, and I will go on record to support the project.
Thank you.
6174387838, you've been unmuted. If you can state your name and address for the record, please. Steve Young, you've been unmuted. If you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Steve Young. My address is 11 Dana Ave, Unit 203. I am a direct abutter. I think this project would be a great addition to the neighborhood, and I am in support.
Thank you.
All right, Scott, you've been unmuted. If you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, this is Scott Davney. I own the building 12 Dana Ave. This is right across the street from me. And I think these units are exactly what High Park needs. They're right adjacent to the commuter rail station, and they also have the parking to support it. So I think this is a great thing for the neighborhood.
Thank you.
All right, Dan, you've been unmuted. If you can state your name and address for the record, please. Dan?
Hello?
Yes, state your name and address for the record, please.
Dan Kaiser, 11 Dana Ave. And I'm, I'm just here to support the project. I believe being close to the commuter rail and, you know, bringing in a little bit of tax revenue and affordability to the area with increased units is going to help, help with the burden there, and it'll help the local businesses and schools.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay.
Irene? Irene, you've been unmuted.
Hello, my name is Irene McGildees, and I'm here with my mother, Joyce Rockwell, and we are residents at 3 Dana Ave and we're direct abutters to the proposed project. So I'd like to begin by sharing with the board that there's an ongoing case in land court regarding... Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I'm not sure what you heard, but my name is Irene McGildees at 3 Dana Ave, direct abutters to this proposed project. So I'd like to begin by sharing with the board that there's an ongoing case in land court regarding a disputed property line with this developer. And the outcome of this case may affect the design of the proposed development. And I would therefore respectfully suggest that the variance hearing should be deferred until after this case has been concluded. In addition to that, us and our neighbors at 6 Dana Ave do not support this project. Folks that have been recently speaking are very surprising, and our new residents of an apartment building built by the same developer at 11 Dana Ave. We've lived and owned this building for 38 years. The proposed development of the abutting property will adversely impact our use and enjoyment of this, of our building at 3 Dana Ave in many ways, including the property line and mature trees along the property line. We've used this land without interruption for the last 38 years, including maintaining mature trees, landscaping. And these are some of the only mature trees on the street which provide canopy in a very urban inner-city area. The overall green space will be further diminished by this development. Our lawn will be amongst the last remaining green space on this street. It's also inconsistent with what the developer has stated as a desire to make the area more beautiful. And they've already shown that they cannot honor their promises of landscaping and green space, as evidenced by what has been built at 11 Dana Ave and its inconsistency with proposed drawings that were submitted.
Okay, thanks very much.
Overcrowding. We live on a small one-way street that's already the main exit of a busy commuter rail station. This proposed project will add 27 units with parking spaces. But we believe that the parking variance will lead to unsafe parking and that residents will prefer to park on the street, which will overburden an already crowded little one-way street.
Okay, thank you, thank you. You're very articulate. Thank you.
Do you want to take one more?
Only, yeah, please do not repeat any points that have already been made. Just state whether you're in favor or opposed.
All right, phone number 617-364-1445. You can just, please, you've been unmuted. If you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Craig Martin, in Colchester, High Park. I'd like the board to acknowledge that there appears, there is, more than appears, there is a misdimensional violation, which should be attended to. They had the height of 40 feet. But at the last meeting they had, they told us that the grade, average grade level was negative 2. And they didn't account for that grade level, which is, I don't want to insult the board, but you measure the height of a building from the top of the grade.
Yep.
So indeed, the height, there is a height violation.
Okay.
And that's crucial in this neighborhood where tall buildings are coming up. We don't want buildings taller than they're supposed to be. The next one's going to be just as tall or taller. And they're coming up in this neighborhood very rapidly. So we'd like them to get this right.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Thanks for that insight. Okay, to the board, I think we referred a lot of testimony. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve a BPDA Design Review. I'll second that. I'll second that.
Okay, the motion is made and seconded. Fortune?
Yes.
Better Barazza?
Oppose.
Don?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Ruggiero?
Yes.
Can I, to him, in favor, the motion passes?
Thank you.
Is everybody here for the court remand?
Yes, Attorney Ferrulo.
Okay, all right. Mr. Fortune, you want to read the remand?
Yeah, I'll just read the cases again, and then we can go from there.
Okay.
Call the case BOA 1110391, 239 to 243 Hanover Street. There are three companion cases. BOA 1110403, 1 to 4 Mechanic Court. BOA 1110414, 11 Board Alley. And BOA 1110423, 2 Board Alley. Name and address for the record, please.
Well, Mr. Fortune, before we go there, can you just read what's on the agenda in the record? The same on all of them.
Yeah, I can do that. The article fit, I'm sorry. This is a court remand. It is ordered the zoning board to hold a remand hearing on the above listed pursuant to August 19, 2022. The board will determine whether it can place a reasonable condition upon the operation of executive suites at the above listed addresses. The violation is Article 54, Section 12, Use and Regulation. Executive suite is a conditional use on Hanover Sub District, which change of art from a restaurant to seven apartments to seven executive suites. This will be the same, this will be the same for Mechanic Court, 11 Board, and 2 Board.
Okay, so just a reminder to the board that most of these proposals for executive suites, because of the city's short-term rental ordinance, we have chosen to deny the applications. In one case, this, referring to, with respect to Battery March, which I'm sure we will hear about that from the proponents, we placed some severe restrictions. But let's, let's hear what the applicants have to say. So go ahead.
Good morning, Attorney Williams, Rowan McFellain, Court of Law, on behalf of the applicants. To give you some background, and then speak about the Superior Court order, these units have been in place since 2014, when the applicant acquired three of the properties. He had already owned one. One is on Hanover, and the other three are what we refer to as back buildings, the buildings behind Hanover Street buildings that face out onto the tunnel. They were renovated as executive suites. Executive suites wasn't allowed use in the code between 2013, when this project started, and until January 8th of 2020, when a new provision was put in making that use in this particular area a conditional use. We discovered prior to the enactment of that ordinance that they were not properly classified at ISD. We refiled with ISD in December of 2019, but there was no hearing scheduled for this until November of 2020, after the ordinance took effect. What we would point out for you, unlike most of the applications that you've seen, is this has operated for eight years with no issues. We had submitted during the original hearing letters from over 50 abutters and local residents who have not, that have supported this. A member of the elected officials testified and supported, and more importantly, stating that the purpose of the short-term rental ordinance was not to deny existing businesses the right to operate, but to prevent new acquisition of substances as Airbnb units. We wanted to draw that distinction at that hearing. Superior Court stated, we meant this fact to be our consideration as to whether this proposal meets the guidelines for conditional use. We think we have, as stated by the chair, the board in another matter, which was a new use, not an existing use, but a new use of Battery March Street, did impose provisos as part of the order of Superior Court. The order reads, "After the remand hearing, the plaintiff shall propose and the defendant shall consider conditions of operation of the executive suites to address the following requirements of conditional use." We would propose today that those conditions, which six in number on decisions by the board of May 14, 21, or 30-36 Battery March Street, be similarly imposed on these units. And I'll just briefly touch on them.
All right, all right. Okay, Mr. Ferrolo, no, that's a, thank you. That's an able summary. Let me just sort of, for the board, for the education of the board. Again, we have typically denied, because of the city's short-term rental ordinance, we have typically denied these requests. 30-36 Battery March Street, on May 14, 2021, the attorney is correct. We approved it with the following provisos, which I will read so that you can understand exactly what we did. Relief was granted to this applicant only. They can have no more than two occupants per unit. The minimum stay of four days was required. And we have had staff onsite at all times, post clear instructions on how to contact management at building entrance, and file a report with the board in one year short term about room occupancy and the length of occupancy by guests. So, Mr. Ferrolo, I'm going to open this for testimony. I'll take some testimony, limited amount. But I want one question. Hang on, you said this has been operating for eight years. Has it been operating with those kinds of provisions?
The provisions were not in place, but...
No, no, that's not what I asked. I'm not asking a legal, I'm not asking a legal question. I'm asking just a practical question.
Well, let me answer this right, Mr. Chair. It is, in operation, the answer is yes. Meaning, back from the hearing that we had in 2020, I am on the record saying then that we went back and looked at our occupancy records, which indicated that the average stay in these units was four to five days. Did we require a minimum stay? No, we have never required a minimum stay.
Okay.
Are we willing to require the minimum stay? The answer is yes.
Okay, all right. Any questions to the board?
Well, I just want to, this is an existing business that got caught up in the short-term housing ordinance that has operated for a long time prior to this without incident. I would, to compare it even to Battery March, which was a new acquisition and a completely new thing, I don't even know if that's fair. But, you know, I'm glad they're back here.
I have a question in regards to, I have a question in regards to occupancy. You have several properties, so I guess we're just talking about this specific property. What is your room occupancy for each unit?
The units, eight studios, eight one-bedrooms, made two bedrooms. So the only units that generally would accommodate more than two people would be the two bedrooms. So that's the one difference in the provisos. Battery March, there's a limit of two people. We would ask that that be per bedroom.
Right, so for the two, so for the two-bedroom, typically, what was your occupancy?
Generally, that would be two or more people, up to four.
Okay. Thanks for that, okay.
It's generally used by families coming to the hospital.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ferrolo. Any other questions? Any other questions or comments on the board? Okay, I'm going to ask for public testimony, but limited it, because we've already heard this case, and I don't want to rehash it excessively. But, so if there's two people who want to speak in favor and two people who are speaking in opposition, if people, if there's interest in public testimony, I will take it now.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, my name is Luigi Natali. Representative Aaron Michael is in this office, and we are in support of this project.
You mean, you're in support of language allowing them to...
Yes, exactly. The technicality, yes, the remand, yep.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Councilor, at large, Michael Flory. Actually, echoing the sentiments of Mr. Ruggiero, the proponent is a great neighbor who goes back to the city in many ways. This is not Airbnb. The city regs were not intended to deny existing businesses the right to continue their executive suite uses. Therefore, the council will go on record and support.
Okay. Are there any other electeds who would like to weigh in? Okay, if not, is there anyone here to speak out? Pardon me?
Mr. Chair, this is Tom. I think I saw Councilor Coletta's hand raised, which she might be having some technical issues.
Okay, is there anyone here to speak in opposition? Okay, nobody here.
I'll make a motion to approve with the following proviso, that it's the release to this applicant...
Do you all hear me?
Oh, gee, you want to counsel Coletta? That you?
Yeah, yeah, please. I would love to comment. And I'm not speaking in opposition. I'm also not speaking in support. I would actually prefer a deferral, members of the board. I am mindful of the fact that this is an existing operation without incident. That is not my concern here, and I seek to work with the proponent. I am concerned of the continuance of this executive suite loophole. And so I am encouraging a deferral so that the city of Boston can be granted more time to further define executive suites to prevent this ad hoc regulatory system of an inherently transient stay and accommodation model. As it currently stands, there is no nightly minimum. And it is up to the board and your discretion to provide conditions, right? But I would prefer, and advocates within disproportionately affected communities, that the city develop and implement clearly defined requirements for executive suite operations as it relates to registration, minimum stay, reporting, wage fairness, and workplace safety. Additionally, I think executive suites should be subject to the city's imposed community impact fee, which assists with the preservation of affordable housing, which was the spirit of the short-term rental ordinance from the very beginning. So although provisos can be given and conditions can be given, they are incredibly hard to enforce under ISD. Enforcement is done through noncriminal disposition of zoning violations. So it doesn't assist the community with any sort of oversight. So that's why I'm seeking a deferral at this moment in time so that the city of Boston could better define executive suites and develop regulations moving forward.
Well, Counselor, your points are extremely well taken, and I think all of us in the board would wish that the city had really clear provisions, because we don't particularly like being in this position of having to, on the one hand, wanting to enforce the short-term rental ordinance, and on the other, having all, having these executive suite loopholes, which, as you point out, you know, allow to get... The problem is that we are under a court remand, and we need to act. And I, but I certainly encourage you to continue acting in the fashion that you are to get clarity on some of these questions so that we're not put in this position in the future. But unfortunately, I think we have to make a decision today about, because of the court remand.
Very well. And thank you so much for the space to provide comment. I do think that this is a policy opportunity, and I can anticipate that. I will be working hard with the community and ISD to make sure that we close this loophole once and for all.
Great, good for you. Thank you.
All right. I like a motion of approval for the following provisos, that release be granted to this applicant only, that there be no more than two adult occupants per bedroom, that the minimum stay of two nights, that they have staff onsite at all time.
But two night, two nights?
Oh, you want, okay.
I mean, I mean, if we're going to be...
Four to five, yeah. We're going to be consistent, it has to be.
Four nights, four nights.
Four day, yeah.
Four nights, four nights. Have onsite staff at all times, post clear instructions on how to contact management, and file a report with the board about occupancy and length of stay one year from issuance of the permit.
Okay, so just to be clear to the rest of the board, what Mr. Ruggiero's proposing is essentially the same terms that were granted to 30-36 Battery March in 2021.
Can I just clarify? Sorry, it's, you said four nights or four days? That would be two different things.
Oh, three, oh, I'm sorry, you're right, three nights.
Four days, three nights.
Four days is what's been in Battery March.
I agree with that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. I will second that motion. Very good.
I think there is an additional proviso, I believe, that was just written, which is staffing, to have staffing.
No, that's what...
He said that.
Yeah, I said that.
Yeah, he said that. Okay. Well, I mean, essentially... For the record, this is the same, the same proviso that was associated with the Battery March project.
Except for the occupancy, because they have two bedrooms.
The bedroom is a bothy unit. That's right. Okay, got it. All right, and there's been a motion made in the second...
Marcher?
Yes.
Better Barazza?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Ruggiero?
Yes.
And I am reluctantly voting in favor as well. I just think that the counselor's comments about needing to clear out the loopholes is absolutely right. So the motion passes.
Let me go back.
Yeah, let's go back.
You can go back to the 10th.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson, for being here for that. I think what we'll try to do just is go till 1 o'clock when Mr. Robinson has to leave, and then probably take another break. So let's get as much done as we can in the interim.
Very good. Calling the next case, calling BOA 122-4052, 517 to 519 Metropolitan Avenue. This is a rec. nine-unit apartment, nine-unit apartment building. The violation of Article 69, Section 29.5, hot street parking design, Article 69, 30.1, building alignment conformity, Article 69, Section 8, a multifamily use to sit in, Article 69, Section 23. This is the neighborhood design overlay district. Article 69, 69, excessive FAR. Article 69, Section 9, building height is accessible stories. Article 69, Section 9, usable for spaces insufficient. Article 69, Section 9, side yards insufficient. And Article 69, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Daniel McDevitt, Attorney, 62 Derby Street, M. Hingham. With me is Walter Hilliard, the owner of the property, and Eileen Rosa, the designer of the property.
All right, you want to tell us what you're proposing?
Sure, sure. Thank you very much. We're proposing to, on a lot that is 12,928 square feet, with 74 feet of frontage on Metropolitan Avenue, to take a single-family building down and create a nine-unit building that will consist of eight three-bedroom units and one two-bedroom unit, which will be handicapped accessible. The design of the building with the three-bedroom units is more in keeping with people having larger families and also having work-from-home space. So that's why it was decided that the best use of the space would be to max it out at the number of three-bedroom units, because there are hardly any of them ever available. The breakdown of these units is the smallest, being the two-bedroom unit is 1,433 square feet. And the largest of the three-bedroom units is 1,618 square feet. This project abuts a 228,114 square-foot lot, which is a shopping center at 942 Hyde Park Avenue. Very recently, a portion of that shopping center parking lot was carved out, and this board and the, through Article 80, and the board approved for 550 Metropolitan Avenue to create 21 residential units. And we are on the other side of the driveway to the parking lot for that project. This is a building that has parking under. The lot, the building itself has been set back from the lot in order to accommodate the ramp to drive down into the lower-level garage, which has 18 parking spaces. But the parking spaces are tandem in nature. The front yard in this zone calls for, under Article 69, Table C, Section 35, calls for a 25-foot setback. And the new building is 42 feet back from the street. And that's to allow two vehicles to be completely out of the garage on the ramp to ensure a safe exit onto Metropolitan Avenue when the cars come out of the garage. Because the building abuts the entrance to the shopping center, there are no closer houses on the left side of the building. So when you're lining up the building, there's nothing to line it up with on the other side. This has been through almost two years of a community process because of the fact that the unique location it is, it finds itself not quite in any neighborhood association, but very close to many neighborhood associations. So Arthur has attended numerous meetings over the last few years and has had overwhelming favorable support from those meetings to add more housing to this neighborhood. In fact, he has met with all of the people on the street. I believe there are 32 letters in favor and none in opposition on file today. And I would ask the board if they have any questions.
Okay.
We have, I'm losing my voice because of allergies.
Sorry to hear it. So what zoning district is this in?
Okay, so this is in a 1F 6,000 zone.
A 1F 6,000, and you want nine units in a 1F 6,000 replacing a single-family? That's a pretty dramatic increase.
Well, it is, but if you look at what happened at the other end of the shopping center...
Yeah, no, no, no. I understand, you already made the case. I'm just, I just...
I'm sorry, Mr. Earl. There's an additional project that was approved at 996 Hyde Park Avenue, not in the shopping center parking lot, but in a 2F 5,000 square-foot zone. The board approved seven units on 9,750 square feet a few years ago, and people are living in that building now.
Okay. The lot looks like, with the exception of the front, which you explained was for the ramps against of the garage, it looks like you're filling up the lot pretty completely.
Well, it's true that there are side yard violations, but the shortest side yard violation is on the side that you're up against the massive parking lot of the shopping center. So there are no residences on that side, really.
Yeah, yeah, no, we got it, thank you. All right, Ms. Better Barazza, how are the drawings?
Mr. Chair, the drawings are adequate.
Any thoughts about density?
I do think the project is dense for its area. It's in a, there's a lot of one-family house structures in the neighborhood.
Okay, I mean, the fact that it's next to a shopping center parking lot is somewhat of a mitigating factor, I gather. Anyway, any questions on the board?
No questions, but I want to, I guess, reinforce that. I feel like it's a little bit of a tough transition from single-family. I understand it's a shopping center, I understand it's a shopping center, but I don't think this project is mitigating that transition. It's actually just moving it closer to the adjacent single-families, and it does appear to be a lot full of very mature trees that are actually doing that transitioning naturally, I guess I'll say. So I too am a little bit nervous about the proposal. I recall the other project, which I believe was behind the shopping mall on the street, so it was in a much different kind of, I think, context in terms of its relationship to this street scale, but no other questions or comments other than that.
All right, thank you. Any other questions on the board? Is anyone here to speak either in favor of or in opposition to the project?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Danielle Fonseca, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. An abutters meeting for this proposal was held on September 27th of 2021. No abutters were present, only a representative from District Council, Ricardo Arroyo's office, was there. The applicants did reach out, as Mr. McDevitt stated, to several neighborhood groups in the area, including the Hyde Park Central River, and met with the Hyde Park Neighborhood Association. But due to this project being so close to the Rosendale border, it did take some time to locate which neighborhood group specifically would cover this area. The applicants were able to get in touch with the appropriate civic group, which is the Mount Hope Canterbury Neighborhood Association. Our office has not received any letters of support or opposition for this project, and we wish to defer to the board for judgment. Thank you.
Okay.
Secretary here, we do have some letters of support.
Okay, Mr. Hampton, is BPDA weighed in on this?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as you could see by ours, it's, you know, too dense for this kind of zoning district. It's already been touched on by the discussion within this hearing, so we're on record as denial without prejudice.
Okay, thank you. Any other raised hands, Better Ambassador?
No raised hands. I'm searching.
Okay. All right, can I have a motion?
I'd like to put forward a motion of denial without prejudice.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Fortune?
Yes.
Better Barazza?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Ruggiero?
Yeah.
And I agree, I also, the motion passes, I think we need to come back with a slightly downsized proposal.
Or at least transitional, as Eric mentioned.
Yeah.
Tell the house some open space and to have a better layout with this parking. Right now, it looks a little bit hazardous.
Thank you.
Call the next case. Sorry. Calling the next case, calling DOA 135-2750, 62 North Beacon Street. This is to convert a single-family to a three-family dwelling with ADU basement. Violation of Article 51, Section 56, our street parking and loading. Article 51, Section 8, the use is forbidden. Article 51, Section 9, the floor deration was excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
I'm Aniona Bossman, 62 North Beacon Street, Boston, Mass.
Please tell us what you have in mind, Ms. Bossman.
Okay, so what we have in mind is we have an existing single-family, three-story, and the owner would like to convert it into just three units and complete, just like a basement unit. I don't think, we're going to take away the ADU, it's just going to be like just a finished basement for unit one. There is showing like a little bit of a bump out on the first floor to extend the first bedroom, the first-floor bedroom. All areas will have separate entrances and utilities.
So the utilities will, each unit will have their own utilities inside?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yes.
And there are three separate entrances or two and one in the basement?
There are, let's see, on the first floor, if you look at, draw our ass, you have the floor plans up. So you'll have an entrance right here on the first floor that will take you to level one, and then you'll have an entrance at the same level, at the porch, it takes you to level two, and then level three entrance is on level two. There's a separation where you meet at the stairs. So if we're looking at the second floor plan, it's actually to my left, I don't know how you're looking at on the drawings. You see where it says like unit four?
Yep.
And then, okay, so there's a separation right there at the stair landing. You can go to the right or to the left. So if you take the left, you're going into unit three, you go to the right, you go unit four. Although it says unit three and four, that's really just because we called the basement unit one, so. But it's only three stories, it's not four units, it's only two units.
Right, right, okay, yeah.
We're not going to be encroaching and going into any property lines, we're not doing that, we're not doing any expansion other than just bumping out at the porch, which is still within the boundary lines.
Okay, so a couple of questions. So there's no change whatsoever to the exterior of the building?
Correct.
And my next question.
Well, no, that's not true, that's not true.
Well, the bump out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that's a change.
Got it. But other than, yeah, everything's being left intact?
Right, we're not adding any decks or anything like that.
Okay, and the basement unit, my question is always, since I'm not, since we're not happy about underground, I'm trying to figure out from the elevation.
Yeah, can we go back to the high elevation?
What is the relationship of the floor of the basement to the grade, outside grade?
To the outside grade, so it's about.
It's like gold, yeah.
It's about four feet, and the ceiling heights roughly like seven foot two. So the basement itself is going to be an addition to the first floor. So say you have like a finished basement, so the first floor only gets access to the finished basement.
Okay, on a three-unit apartment, you need to have a minimum seven foot six on the floor-to-ceiling height. So seven foot two is a violation of building code.
Well, if we were doing a dwelling unit there, they only require seven feet.
No, that's not, that's true for a one and two, it's not true for a three unit.
Okay, okay. So if we need, so the whole point is we would have to do some excavation if we need to bring it to that.
Which puts it further underground. So what is supposed to be in the, what is going, what rooms are going to be in the basement? I can't quite tell from the drawing.
The bedroom.
Just from the drawing, it's just a bedroom and a bathroom, there's like a little dining room and kitchenette.
Okay, and that's a self-contained unit?
Yes, it is, but you have access down from the first floor.
Ms. Better Barazza, what do you think of this proposal?
So in terms of unit one, I'm trying to understand how you, I think the stairs are missing to get to unit one from the stairs. Is that correct?
Can you move that, can you move it down?
Eric, right? It seems like there's stairs from the top unit, unit two, or from the porch, there's some.
From the porch.
There's some stairs missing to that basement unit.
I agree.
That being said, so the drawings are not accurate. That being said, I do see two doors.
In the rear.
Well, one is in the rear, and it seems like one is at the front.
Yeah, you know what, you're right, Ms. Henzie, Better Barazza. So right now, there is a, can anyone zoom in, like, is there a way just to, oh, okay, so if we zoom in, yep. So right now, correct, so where it says unit one, there's a one, is a one-door access, one-door access here at the back.
Well, I see two doors, right, one to the left and one to the bottom.
And that two doors, the other one to the right, that actually goes through the utility space.
Utilities.
Right, that goes through utility space.
Correct, what I'm basically suggesting is, there is a possibility that you can provide access to that door that you see on the left, if there's a throughway.
Correct, correct.
Right, I mean, right now, there's only one egress, right?
Yes, right now, there is. So if we took the entrance that goes into the utility, and we created a little corridor separated that, then we could have access to the.
All right, so.
Right, but there's actually two egresses potentially. One would be going to the unit at the top if, leading out to the porch, if it was drawn accurately.
Right, with the stairs.
So one of the things that we don't do at this board is design on the fly.
Right.
I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion to defer this.
Thank you.
A lot of questions of the drawings and how many units are here and everything, so.
I would second that, Eric.
So what, all right, well, Fortune?
Yes.
Better Barazza?
Motion to defer, yes, and I would like to just say something at the end.
When we finish with the motion, when we finish with the vote, you can say what she needs to do. So Better Barazza?
Yes, motion to defer.
Don?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Ruggiero?
Yeah.
Okay, so the motion passes, so you need to deal with the issue of the ceiling height, you need to deal with the issue of the egress, you need to have the plans reflect something that will work and is consistent with the building code. Ms. Better Barazza, any other comments?
Basically, just to work with your architect to have them draw the drawings correctly.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
You'll have a date of December 13th at 11:30.
December 13th, so your questions were mainly the basement as far as egress and, yeah.
You need to make sure it meets building code.
So it needs at least seven foot six height. Right.
And then you can allow for two egress, but that, your architect should know their code.
If it's a three-unit building, it's a three-unit building, if it's a four-unit building, it's a four-unit building, but it's, you got to pick.
The good thing is this board is trying to help you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. December 13th, will I get something in the mail?
Sorry?
Will I get another letter in the mail to confirm?
Oh, you will not, no, you'll not.
Okay, so December 13th at what time?
11:30.
Okay, thank you for that.
Good luck, Ms. Bossman, we, as Ms. Better Barazza says, we'd like to help you figure this out.
Appreciate it, okay, thanks, good luck.
Calling the first case for rediscussion, calling DOA 133-6832, 291 Beacon Street. This is an existing lodging house, change of occupancy increased the number of occupants from 11 to 31. No construction is planned. The violation is Article 8, Section 7, the use is conditional, and Article 9, Section 1, extension of non-conformity use. Name and address for the record, please. 291 Beacon Street.
Yes, they chose our tenant. Barry?
George Haratonian, 171 Beacon Street. I represent the ownership.
All right, you want to tell us, first of all, tell us why you're back for rediscussion, and then tell us what the project is.
I believe my counsel is supposed to speak, I'm not sure where she is right now, but I think she's on.
Mr. Chairman, I do actually have a hard stop at one, within eight minutes, I don't think we're going to get through this, so I wonder if I should just go ahead and step out now. Sorry.
All right, Mr. Robinson, we will miss you dearly.
I apologize, thank you, sorry.
Take care. Okay, so just to remind people that we now are a five-member board, and everybody's entitled to get a request of administrative deferral, because if you go ahead, you will need all five votes for approval. So do you have the, is the attorney for 291 Beacon on?
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Tanya Treveson, Doherty Law Offices, 50 Franklin Street in Boston, representing the petitioner. With me is Nancy Lowe from Joyce Strategies, who is a consultant for the project and the project owner, who has already introduced himself. And with the board's permission, before we go any further into the case, there are two items that I'd like to bring up. First, Mr. Haratonian would like the board members to know that he's reducing the request for an increase in occupants from 31 to 22 occupants. He will also impose a minimum stay for lodgers of two nights on the weekends and three days during the week. Secondly, although the building code would allow a total of 31 occupants in this existing licensed lodging house containing 7,274 square feet, after several extensive neighborhood meetings, Mr. Haratonian has concluded that a total of 22 occupants is more in keeping with the neighbor's expectations. Also, it's important to note the fact that 21 occupants is the average number of occupants the city permits at seven other lodging houses in the same H365 residential zone. The venture is feasible with 22 occupants based on the 10% vacancy rate. Having said that, the building at 21 Beacon Street holds a certificate of legal use and occupancy, a current inspection certificate, and a current lodging house license, which permits it to be legally used as a lodging house for 10 dwelling units and 11 occupants.
Okay, so is the request today before us to change the increase from 11 to 21 or to 31?
No, it's 11 to 21.
Oh, okay, all right.
Sorry, 11 to 22, I'm sorry, 11 to 22, yes.
All right, okay.
Okay.
All right, and why, to remind me, since I don't always have a wonderful memory, why we are here for rediscussion?
It was deferred, I believe, previously.
Because?
It was deferred because the last time, there was only four members.
Oh, okay, so we haven't actually heard the case then?
Correct, yeah, you didn't have a quorum last time.
Okay, and we now are a five, okay. All right, okay, so is there any presentation that you want to make beyond the, just adjusting the requested increase from 11 to 22?
Yes, I just have a few other background notes to make, if I may.
Yep.
So the building, for background, is made of brick, it's four stories high, and it has fire sprinklers. The unit sizes are substantial, ranging from 221 square feet to 1,226 square feet. And of the 10 units, two are one-room units, five are studios, two are one-bedrooms, and there is one two-bedroom unit on the fourth floor, and all the units are equipped with kitchens. There is no work being proposed by the petitioner for this underutilized lodging house, because even though the building and sanitary regulations support a total occupant load of 31 occupants based on the existing floor plans and the gross floor area of 7,674 square feet, the petitioner is only requesting an increase from 11 to 22 occupants.
Got it, no, you got it.
So if granted, the increase in occupancy will allow the building to be properly maintained, kept in good and safe condition, and operated in compliance with its license so that it doesn't become a detriment to the surrounding properties or the greater neighborhood.
Okay.
There's been a survey of the surrounding properties, which indicates that there are a total of seven licensed lodging houses in the area that are currently being operated within the same residential zone and within a short distance of the property. And the average occupant load for those seven properties is 21 occupants.
Okay, is that how that number was arrived at, with the community groups?
Yes. So that is in part part of it, and granting the relief would allow this project to be economically feasible for the project proponent, because it would not be economically feasible to have 22 occupants.
Okay, well, all right, and Ms. Better Barazza, there's no work being planned, correct?
No, not currently, no.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yep?
Mr. Chair, I just have a quick question, secretary here. When you reduced from 31 to 22, did you go back to the community? Because I just want to, you know, this is all opposition, I have no support letters, so I just wanted to question that.
Yes, there was a presentation made to the community requesting a reduction to 22. And there should be, there should be one support letter in the file.
How long ago was that presentation made?
I believe it was done in August.
In August, okay.
Can I, can I ask how many total bedrooms you have? Can you just confirm how many bedroom units you have? Not units, bedrooms.
Bedrooms.
So there are two one-bedroom units, one two-bedroom units, five studios, and two single-room units.
That presented after 22, does it?
Well, actually.
What's currently there?
Can you repeat that again, and then I'll just do my math, sorry.
Okay, so what's currently there are two single rooms, five studios, two one-bedrooms, and one two-bedroom.
Okay, thank you.
That's a total, it should be come up to 10.
Well, I can.
11, I'm sorry.
I have 11, because you have one two-bedroom, right?
Yep, it's 11.
Right, it's 11.
It's 11, so, and you're not planning any work, so how do you get 22 people in 11 beds?
Well, if we do get this permission, we plan to do some construction work, but these beds, most of these bedrooms can be occupied by two individuals, the one two-bedroom can be occupied by four individuals.
Well, okay, I'm just having a little bit of trouble, because you're saying on the one hand, you want approval for 22, but on the other hand, you're not doing any work, but then you might do some work in order to accommodate 22. It's sort of, where's the A?
Mr., the applicant is on, can speak to that?
Sure, the work that might come later are just renovations of kitchens and bathrooms, we're not changing the layout or the floor plans, and we came up with 22 minimum based on the number of rooms we have that by code can allow at least one queen-sized bed in the room, and if a couple is staying in that room, that's two people, and if there's a couple staying in each of the 11. And if there's a couple staying in each of the eleven dwelling units in the building, that's twenty-two.
Yeah, no, no, I can multiply eleven times two and get twenty-two, but, all right, well, I mean, that's a ceiling.
That's a ceiling, correct. We may, we may have six people.
All right, okay, everybody would have to be couples in order to get to that number. All right.
That's correct.
Any questions from the board? I mean, Ms. Better Barazza, there's not much point asking you how the plans are since you're not going to hopefully work.
Correct.
All right, is there any other questions in the board? Is there anyone to speak either in favor or in opposition to the proposal?
Yes, hello, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Maggie Van Sgoya from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office ran two of butters meetings, considering there was interest in unanswered questions from the community. They also went to the Civic Association, and the Neighborhood Association of Back Bay issued a letter of strong opposition to the project. With this, we defer judgment to the board.
And the letter of strong opposition was based on what?
Any increase in occupancy.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, Secretary here, I have letters of opposition, basically with the Mayor's Office just there.
Okay, so it's just that they don't want any increase in occupancy. Is that clear? Okay, all right, thank you. Anybody else to testify?
Yes. Good evening, Chair members of the board. My name is Anthony Biaus, and I'm Counselor Boxley, on to the Back Bay. The proponent seeks to convert units currently operating as apartment units into a short-term rental hotel, which is not an approved use in the Back Bay Residential District. Our office has received numerous letters in opposition, and I should add that this is even after the proposal lowered their increase from twenty-one to thirty. The proponent, I mean, the residents are opposed to a project that would lower the quality of life by stuffing up business in the center of a carefully crafted residential neighborhood. And in addition, approval of this proposal would set a perilous precedent as there are thirty lodging houses in the neighborhood. For the reason stated, Counselor Bob respectfully asks that you vote to reject this application. Thank you.
So, hang on, before you get off, so the assumption is that the ultimate goal is to use this as a short-term rental?
Um, yes, that seems to be the case. Again, they're currently operating as apartment units, and that seems to be the stated goal.
Okay, thank you.
The, the, the building does have a lodging house license currently, so it is permitted to operate as a short-term.
We're taking public testimony, thank you. Okay, anybody else?
Chairman, I do have five raised hands.
Okay, let's go.
All right, Carol, you've been unmuted. If you can state your name and address for the record, please. Carol?
I'm Carol Ann Hayes. I'm at two seven four Beacon Street, across from two ninety-one Beacon Street. My main issue I have with this application is the expansion of the lodging license from eleven to twenty-two to allow two ninety-one to become, in effect, an Airbnb hotel with an absentee corporate owners. Little oversight and accountability. Their short-term rental, as Ben mentioned, will take away the stock of rental apartments available in the city, which is counter to what Mayor Wu wants to do for the city of Boston. This is a major factor in Boston. Buildings being converted to short-term rentals such as proposed for two ninety-one Beacon Street are no longer available for long-term renters, making our rental housing in the city of Boston even more expensive and hard to come by. I have lived in this area for close to sixty years. Back, the Back Bay was full of rooming houses, crime, vagrants, noise, trash, and many more rats. It was not pleasant or desirable place to live. There were muggings, break-ins, and murders in this area. Finally, through a lot of effort, leasing, and investment, the Back Bay has become a neighborhood where I feel safe walking at night, greeting my neighbors and fellow residents. There is no vetting for this, only can you pay, and are you not a criminal?
Okay.
We will have people.
Yeah, thank you very much. I think you made your point very clearly. Next.
Okay. Elliot, you've been unmuted. If you can state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Elliot Laffer. I live at ninety Commonwealth Avenue in Back Bay. I'm Chair of the Neighborhood Association of the Back Bay. I want to clarify that we are not making an assumption that this is an application for short-term rentals. When the applicant came to our Licensing and Building Use Committee, which he's done twice, with the larger than the smaller of his proposals, it was very clear from him that this was a plan for short-term rental. We have not opposed that kind of use on Newbury Street and in the commercial district, and would not oppose that kind of votes there now. But in the residential district, this is a misuse of a space that's on a residential block. We are, you know, chit-chat between the residential district and the commercial district in the Back Bay, and we don't need to be bleeding commercial uses into the residential district. The applicant has suggested some conditions and then said, oh, they will be enforced because ISD can come and look and make sure that they're doing things correctly. That's not a likely way to enforce conditions.
Okay, I believe we got it. Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? And I think Mr. Laffer made the point very clearly. Unless anybody wants to add anything new, I think we probably should wrap up testimony.
Okay. Bob, you've been unmuted. If you would like to state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Board. And, Mr. Chairman, this is Bob Knapp from two seventy-nine Beacon Street, in the two seventy-nine, two eighty-one building. So we're just five doors down on Beacon Street, and I'm here to speak against this proposal. What we're basically, I've attended all the meetings and looked at the information that's been posted. It's an Airbnb hotel, and.
Yeah, okay. I think we're getting a pretty clear picture. Anybody else?
Yes. Barry, you've been unmuted. State your name and address for the record, please.
This will be the last one.
Okay. Barry?
I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, my name is Barry Brown. I'm a resident of two seventy-four Beacon Street. Rather than add additional to the comments made, I support them and with my neighbors oppose this project.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Okay, I think we've heard all we need to hear. Can I have a motion, please?
So this is a conditional use, though, right?
Yeah, but, I mean, he's, he's stated he wants to take his lodging house, which he's licensed for, and it's essential function as an Airbnb in violation of city policy. There's no way we can approve this.
So, Mr. Chair, this is Tom. The short-term rental ordinance for the city of Boston does specifically exempt lodging houses.
Right, so he has a lodging house license now. That's fine. This is a question of expanding it so that it functions in a different way. No one's suggesting taking away his lodging house license.
It's a question of expanding capacity on the, you can still operate this way. You can still operate as an Airbnb, but just for eleven people, not twenty-two people. Whether we approve this or deny this.
Yeah.
I mean, my motion was to provide additional timing to get support from the community and to confirm the occupancy.
I.
Because I felt like, I felt like the occupancy reduction came very last minute and did not allow for that to be vetted within the community.
Well, he has, I mean, from what we heard from the testimony, and these are people who have been before this board many times and kind of know our policies. They're comfortable with him being a lodging house with a limit of eleven, but anything else, they're not. I'm not, I don't think, I don't know, I don't think there's anything to be gained by additional time.
Can I interject?
No, no, this is a discussion of the board.
I'll make a motion for denial of the expansion of capacity.
Second that motion, Secretary.
Fortune?
Yes.
Better Barazza?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Rugero?
Yes.
Yes, and I also, the motion passes to maintain the current level of occupants under the license for the lodging house. Okay, let's keep going.
Mr. Chair, I just want to make sure, I did see in the chat that someone's going to be deferring, so I'm going to bring it up again. We are a five-member board, so we need five members to be in support of the project. I'm going to call anybody who wants to defer or withdraw their project for eleven thirty, if they can give me the address, please.
Mr. Fortune, eighteen dash twenty Parkman Street.
Thank you, Mr. Moranti. Calling DOA one two six eight nine zero three, eighteen to twenty Parkman Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is George Moranti. I'm an attorney with the business address of three fifty West Broadway in South Austin, requesting an administrative deferral for this matter.
And a motion.
Motion for deferral.
Second.
Fortune?
Yes.
Better Barazza?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Rugero?
Yeah.
And I, two supporters, the motion passes.
You'll have the date of December thirteenth at eleven thirty.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals for the next three cases? Washington Street, Dorchester, and then Washington Street? Bearing none, I'll continue. Calling the next case, calling DOA one three four nine zero two five, eleven fifty-three to eleven fifty-five Washington Street. This erects a new five-story mixed-use building with twenty-four residential units over eighteen parking spaces, an amenity space and roof deck, and elevator access, and a small retail space, which is only. The violation is Article sixty-five, section sixteen, excessive FAR. Article sixty-five, section sixteen, insufficient righ yard setback. Article sixty-five, section sixteen, excessive building height. Article sixty-five, section sixteen, insufficient off-street parking. And Article sixty-five, section forty-one, off-street parking and loading. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is George Moranti. I'm an attorney with the business address of three fifty West Broadway in South Austin. I'm joined at the hearing by Michael Delafave of Rhodey Architect, Project Architects. This is an Article eighty small project, which was approved by the BPDA on July fourteenth. This is a property located at, actually, I should start, the reason why this was deferred, Mr. Chairman, is because the wrong zoning article was noted on the previous refusal letter, and that had to be corrected. This is a property located eleven fifty-three Washington Street in Dorchester's historic Lower Mills neighborhood, at the confluence of Washington Street and Adams Street. The site consists of a twelve thousand one hundred and one square foot lot, which is currently occupied by a single-story commercial building, which contains a convenience store and a liquor store with a large surface accessory parking lot. What is proposed is a new four-story mixed-use building to contain twenty-four dwelling units, including four IDP units for an IDP percentage of seventeen percent, as well as approximately sixteen hundred fifty-five square feet of ground-floor commercial space with eighteen accessory residential parking spaces located in a ground-floor garage accessed from the Washington Street side of the site, and a total of twenty-nine resident and visitor bicycle spaces. It would be a rooftop common amenity room with a large common roof deck with elevator access. The unit mix here consists of four one-bedroom units of approximately six hundred and sixty square feet and twenty-two bedroom units, ranging in size from eight hundred fifty-two square feet to twelve hundred twenty-one square feet. The governing zoning is Article sixty-five, as I said, and the site is located within an NS, Neighborhood Chocolate Zoning Sub-District, and the proposed project requires the following variances. The zoning refusal letter cites violations for insufficient off-street parking. Eighteen parking spaces are provided while the zoning code, Table F, Article sixty-five, would require thirty-five, the combined residential and commercial use. Provided parking ratio was determined by the BPDA and city transportation staff during the Article eighty review processes being adequate. Insufficient off-street loading is also a cited violation. The building's garage and its contained uses also underwent a great deal of review by the BPDA and city transportation staff, which we're satisfied with and approve the current garage program. A variance is needed for excessive floor area ratio, with proposed FAR here of two-point-four and a maximum underzoning of one. And the building also requires a height variance with a maximum building height of forty feet underzoning. The proposed height here is forty-six feet to the roof line and fifty-seven feet to the top of the rooftop amenity room, which is set well back from all public ways. The building's height and massing are derived from a careful study of the site's context and urban conditions. Architecturally, the building's expression is regarded almost as an extension of the historical Baker Chocolate Mill buildings from which the proposed project takes significant design and massing cues. And with respect to the final cited violation, that's the rear setback violation, to the rear of the site is the Star Market site and a parking lot observing residents of the Baker Chocolate Residential condominium. With that, I'll pause and take any questions that members may have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moranti. Few questions. The amenity space on the rooftop, can you describe it, or can we see it on the drawings?
Yes. If we scroll to the appropriate page, the roof contains or consists of a common roof deck. That being the case, access has to be provided by elevator, and also, of course, a stairway, both of which must be charged into a penthouse, the building code requirements. The amenity space is approximately twelve hundred twenty-two square feet, so it consists of some indoor space on the roof for use of residents. It could also be for storage of, for example, rooftop furniture, tables and chairs for use on the common roof deck.
So it's sort of performing a double function, as a headhouse in terms of access to the roof deck, but larger than that in order to accommodate storage and other things?
That's exactly correct.
Yeah, okay, all right, that makes sense. Okay, and in terms of, you know, you talked about context and drawing from the chocolate factory, blah, blah, blah. How does, in terms of, it's slightly, I mean, it's sort of kitty-corner from that, and the other buildings in immediate proximity aren't that big. Well, can you talk a little bit about contextual design?
I can, somebody who can speak contextual design much better than I is Mike Delafave of Rhodey Architects. I'll send it over to Mike.
Okay.
Thank you, George. Mike Delafave, Rhodey Architects, business address of five thirty-five Albany Street. Ms. Ambassador, we have some renderings at the rear of this presentation. Would you be able to slide to those? There we go. So, yes, there is, there's the Star Market just to our west, sort of northwest. And then there is a series of single-story buildings. Across the street from us is a series of kind of two- and three-story buildings. And then, Ms. Ambassador, could you keep scrolling, please? A little bit more. The other direction, please. A little bit more. I'm sorry, so there we go. Okay, so, so this is the rendering of the building. We took a lot of different cues off of the Baker Chocolate Factories, particularly the big windows, lots of brick, lots of architectural brick detailing. So the idea is that it's sort of stitched into that context that's behind us. I believe that there's another couple shots here. Yeah, there we go. So you can see that Baker Chocolate Factory is just to the left-hand side of the page.
Yeah. Okay. All right, I mean, it's certainly increasing the number of stories that are typical, immediately adjacent, but I get it. Okay. Ms. Better Barazza, how are the drawings?
The drawings are good. Can you please talk about any kind of sustainability and affordability measures for the project? You know, like, is this, do you have any affordable housing? What's the sustainability performance benchmark you're trying to hit for the project?
Mike, this is George Moranti. Do you want to speak to sustainability and I'll speak to affordability?
Yeah, that'd be fine, George. So currently, the standards for what we're going to try to achieve haven't really been laid out yet. We have been doing a lot of, you know, the building code is very strict these days, so we are working towards some high efficiency. The building will be solar-ready as required by code. And besides that, we have not had any specific conversations with the owner about his sustainability goals.
Thank you, Mike. With respect to affordability, there are four IDP units in the building. Required under the IDP policy would be three units. The project is committed to seventeen. The, the project is committed to seventeen percent affordability, exceeding what is required by adding an additional two-bedroom unit as an IDP unit. So the four IDP units would consist of one, one-bedroom unit and three two-bedroom units.
Okay, thank you. Just to let you know that you don't have that much surface on the roof for phototags, but hopefully you can convince the owner to hit some, you know, sustainability benchmarks.
Absolutely.
Any other questions on the board? All right, is there anyone here to speak on behalf or in opposition to the project?
Yes, Mister Chairman, members of the board, calling Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time the Mayor's Office, I'd prefer judgment to the board. The background information, the proponent did extensive outreach to the community, and that with the Lower Mill Civic Association on multiple occasions. While some residents expressed concerns regarding traffic at the intersection of Washington Street, Adams Street, and Dot Ave, many were in support of the mixed-use building at this location. The BPDA has voted in the approval of this project, and with that, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mister Chair, Secretary, we have one letter of opposition due to traffic.
Okay, thank you. Any other, any other, anybody else?
There aren't any raised hands.
Okay, all right, can I have a motion, please?
Mister Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
Okay, BPDA, if review is necessary?
Probably not, since they already are going through that process with BPDA. They already kind of...
Mister Hampton, you want another bite of the apple? Oh, I guess, he's either, he's either gone or...
Yeah, I mean, I, if there, if there is any discussion, I would just say a little bit more clarity on, you know, what is that amenity space and just program, but it seems fine.
Yeah, okay. All right, is there a second?
Second.
Mister, Mister Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Marazza?
Yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Mister Ruggiero? And I am also in favor of motion passes.
Thank you. Calling the next case, calling DOA one three three six one eight nine, two thousand five, Dorchester Avenue. Just to extend the driveway to park vehicles on the side of the house. Violation to Article sixty-five, Section forty-one, off-street parking. Article sixty-five, Section nine, residential dimension regulation, insufficient usable open space. Name and address for the record.
Marazzi, Times, two thousand five, Dorchester Ave, Dorchester, Mass, oh two one two four.
Ms. Times, are you the owner of this home?
Yes.
Okay, so tell us what you want to do.
Well, I had already sent an email to Robert...
Oh, oh, I remember this, yes.
And, and he told, and, and he told me that he was going to submit it, so I don't have nothing to give, but you all pretty much know what I did. I just, I already, you know, just excavate, you know, asphalt through my driveway, I removed the bushes and fence, so it's just a extended driveway. And I submitted that information to Robert Domingo already. I thought he already submitted something to you all.
Okay, well, we have what we have. Yeah, as I recall, this is sort of a funny, funny-shaped lot, and I think there was a question about whether you could make it past the corner of the house with enough, with enough distance. Mister Domingo, are you on?
Yes, I am, Mister Chairman.
Yeah, is, is that your recollection as well?
Yes, yes, it is, but it, it does work, and I just wanted to give my approval to this, for this plan.
Okay, well...
Okay, that, that's very helpful, because I recalled this project go, coming in front of the board, and I know that some of the issues was whether it would be considered front yard parking. That was the major kind of, you know, zoning issue.
Right, and whether the, the driveway was wide enough to make it past that little corner, that corner there.
Right.
Okay, so as far as the BTD is concerned, and Mister Domingo, we're okay. Ms. Bede Marazza, any other thoughts?
No, if Bob is okay with it, I, I'm fine with it as well, just...
Okay, okay. Any questions on the board? Anybody want to speak on behalf of the applicant or in opposition?
Mister Chair, Carney with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office held an Butters' meeting on May fifteenth. There were no concerns expressed by the community. With that, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, can I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Mister Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Marazza?
Yes.
Dong?
Yes.
Ruggiero?
Yeah.
And I'm in favor. Have a wonderful driveway, Ms. Times.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Bob.
Calling the next case, calling DOA one three zero nine four six five thirty-nine sixty-four, Washington Street. Just to convert the existing basement into a new unit, change arc from three units to four units. The violation to Article sixty-seven, Section eight, a multifamily use is forbidden. Article sixty-seven, Section fifty-six, insufficient parking space required for Unit Two. Article sixty-seven, Section nine point four, location of the main entrance that, that shall face the front lot line. Article sixty-seven, Section eight point two, basement unit use and regulations. Article sixty-seven, Section nine, lot area is insufficient. Article sixty-seven, Section nine, lot width is insufficient. Article sixty-seven, Section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive, and Article sixty-seven, Section nine, lot frontage is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please. Mister DeSova on?
He did not check in. I'm looking at the list now to see if he's still not in.
He did not check in at all today?
No.
Is there anyone on for thirty-nine sixty-four Washington Street?
No one checked in yesterday or today.
As I recall this case, there was a lot of unanswered questions, so...
Mister Chair, it's one twenty-seven, I'm going to make a motion for denial without prejudice.
Second.
Mister Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Marazza?
Yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Mister Ruggiero?
Yeah.
And I am also in favor of the motion passes.
That's it, Mister Chair.
That's it, that's right. All right, thank you all for hanging in there, and we, the, the meeting is now adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Recording stopped.